Pre-K fantastic youths.
Is it on? Is it, okay. So, in case, bless you, in case you have never worked with preschoolers, it's very much like sorting feral cats. These kids are amazing though, so we're gonna go through, I want you to introduce yourself. When I come to you, you're gonna tell me your name. Some of them are Lincoln pre-K graduates, but they came with brothers, so they're here to help. So, once we say your name, I want you to go find your mommy and your daddy, okay? What's your name?
Aiden.
Aiden what?
Aiden Orin.
And Aiden's in kindergarten. We'll give you a round of applause and you go right down and find mama. Hello, Moana, what's your name today?
Emma.
Emma what?
Emma Otney.
Emma Otney, go find mom and dad. Hey, what's your name?
Spencer.
Spencer what?
Spencer, Spencer Tim.
That's right, thank you, good job Spencer. Watch. You might think you're seeing double. What's your name?
Gabe. Captain Perry.
Gabriel Perry, thank you Gabriel. What's your name?
Wil- William Edgar Kibler.
Thank you Willie. Watch that. Hey, what's your name? Draven.
Draven.
Draven Orin. He thinks he has to eat it. There, thank you Draven. Hello, what's your name?
Elijah.
Elijah what?
Elijah Keith.
Thank you Elijah, thank you. Hey handsome, now this is a graduate. What's your name?
Sebastian Fote.
Sebastian Fote, thank you. Wait for, wait for Alex though, wait. And, next to him, we have his brother, what's your name?
Alex.
Alex what?
A- Alex Fote.
Alex Fote. Okay, hang onto his hand and take him right down. Careful. Thank you for being a big brother. What's your name?
Harrison John.
Hammer.
Har- Harrison Hammer.
That's good, Harrison John Hammer, thank you. You, what's your name?
Crew.
Crew what?
Crew Allen.
Crew Allen what?
Crew Allen Stevens.
Thank you. What's your name?
Maxwell Hammer.
Thank you Maxwell. Hello sir, what's your name?
Ben. Bennett Boone.
Thank you Bennett Boone, good job. This kid likes to make blue snow, what's your name?
Colton. I don't know.
Colton Distal.
Yeah.
It's Colton Distal. Thank you Colton, let's give him a big round. Alright Mia, what's your name?
Mia Reed Isabella.
Mia Isabella Reed. Mia Isabella Reed, thank you princess. Alright mister, what's your name?
Elliot Jim Perry.
Elliot Perry, good job. And my helper, through thick and thin, no matter what, when he shows up, I put him, I give him a task and he always does it, even when it's taking care of little kids, what's your name sir?
Brayden Distal.
Thank you Brayden Distal. I just wanna say, as Jill Miller is coming up and she is going to be, I think we're, are we talking about it later? Talking about it later, okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Tuitt and parents and families, thank you all for bringing all of your kids and starting us off, keeping us centered on why we're here and what we do. Thank you. Before we begin our business meeting this evening, it is with heavy hearts that we're going to ask this board, those in attendance and those watching, that we take a moment of silence to honor two of those within our district who we've lost. Ms. Pauline Sinaba, a bus aide, and Ms. Elena Smith, an eighth grade student. Thank you. This time I'd like to call our meeting to order. Mrs. Perry?
Dr. McBride?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Dr. Gase?
Here.
Mr. Kizabeth?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Thank you. Our next, I don't know if it's me or you. Our next piece is to adopt the agenda. Board members, if you could, please take a look at the agenda and let me know if there are any additions, deletions, or addendums.
I do have two corrections on page three, and that is under the consent agenda for employment 7.03. Again, on page three, under support staff for the 2021-2022 contract year. Service technologist Owen Brewer. Level two should actually be level zero. So that is the first correction on that page, and then the second one is a little bit further down, under support staff changes. Heather Musa Francis, a food service general worker. That change is effective beginning January 3rd, 2022, retroactively, which increases her hours per workday. I also have a deletion, and that is on page six. Action item 8.07. We should remove, approve Lucas County Family and Children First Lease Agreement.
So removing 8.07?
Correct.
With those three corrections, then we would need a motion to approve the agenda.
I moved, yes. Half a Seneca County heard that. I moved to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
I will second it.
Mrs. Perry?
Mr. Kizabeth?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. Right now we are on to section three, which are our presentation. Mrs. Tuitt already started to give us a great intro on this, so we have Ms. Miller and Ms. Tuitt.
Thank you. Since I just presented all of those little babies, I don't have too much to say except that tomorrow is March 1st and we begin enrollment for Lincoln pre-K. Currently, we have, oh, I don't wanna give an inaccurate number, but we have close to 150 students that are already enrolled this school year, and that waiting list gets extensive. So please, please, fill out your paperwork, call us at 419-455-9107. Option one, and we will get your paperwork in and get your student in for preschool. Without further ado?
Hi. There we go. I'm Jill Miller, I'm the district, one of the district's social workers here at Tiffin City Schools. And this is Ace of Hearts, one of our therapy dogs. He's been working a lot lately, so he's a tired boy tonight. With the increasing issues we've been facing, such as relapses in parents' addiction, homelessness, increased anxiety and depression in our students, death of family members, various unknowns due to COVID, and now even more recently, continued threats to our schools and even a student death. It's very evident that we need mental health, help and supports now more than ever. However, the issue continues to arise year after year about where we're going to get the money to do this. We've been lucky to receive grant monies from the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board of Seneca, Ottawa, Sandusky, and Wyandotte Counties, as well as S.R. III's funds. However, we know with any kind of grant funding, that it's not guaranteed from year to year. This in turn leads to increased anxiety of the very people that are providing these supports. Wondering if it will be enough and how do we meet the needs of our staff, students, and families with the continuous unknowns of, well, we have the funds. You'll see the community survey that will be shared in just a little bit. And one of the survey results states that 51.3% feel that the district should put more emphasis on developing students' social and emotional wellbeing. And Mr. Fallon indicated that any number above 50% is statistically significant and demonstrating strong opinions either way. So, with all of that being said, I'm really hoping that this board, along with our strategic planning committees, will take a serious look at confirmed district-supported funding for these essential services. However, we do have a lot of proactive edr- proactive measures in place already. A lot of these include increased efforts to build relationships with our families. We're finding out the needs and we are making referrals to the United Way GL cap that helps with housing and funding. The Morrison House, which is one of our homeless shelters, as well as other community supports that we have. We have increased our attendance intervention plans to try to get some of our students that we're missing to come back to school. We have provided mindfulness and yoga, youth yoga practices in our preschool and elementary buildings. We have trained in unconscious bias with all our staff members in the Tiffin City Schools. And we have also implemented a Blue and Gold Mondays to help try to unite us all. We are working in PBIS, which is Positive Intervention Supports. And we are increasing positive interventions and supports with our students through these programs. This year, we have also implemented the Signs of Suicide Program at the middle and high school levels. And this teaches our staff and students three important steps to help combat feelings of suicide and helplessness. These are A, C, and T. A equals acknowledge. Actually having a conversation with the person and acknowledging that things seem different or that they have withdrawn or changed. C equals care. This is showing the person that you care about them and will be there to help support them. And T equals tell. Telling a trusted adult that can refer that person to trained professionals or resources that can help. We also have character education programming at the elementary and middle school levels. And of course, our wonderful therapy dogs. Those placed in our schools and those that we are able to have in training so that they may go to their forever home in another school. We want to thank you for your continued support of our mental health as well as social and emotional supports for our Tiffin City Schools staff, students, and families. Any questions?
I just wanna take a moment to thank you each and the entire team for all that you do as a mental health provider in the community. I have a unique view on that and I know that you all come at it from a holistic approach from prevention, education, culture, and intervention. And the last two years have been incredibly trying. I hope that you each know that you're making a difference and that our district is really fortunate for the phenomenal team that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, thank you.
At this time, Mr. Bose is going to do Second Quarter Crystal Apple Awards.
Thank you Dr. McBride. It is my honor and my privilege to present to you the 2021-2022 Second Quarter Crystal Apple Award winners. Dr. McBride, if you'll join me up here. First, we want to recognize our Classified Staff Award winner, Mr. Dan Corper. Mr. Corper, could you please come forward? Mr. Corper was nominated by Chris Mansour. Dan is a Tiffin Columbine graduate and has worked for Tiffin City Schools since July of 2015 as the head stadium custodian. Before starting at Tiffin City Schools, Dan worked at Mohawk Nursery for 17 years. In the area of teamwork, this is what Mr. Mansour had to say about Dan. "Dan truly demonstrates excellence when it comes to teamwork. For Dan, teamwork is comprised of three things: direction, strong structure, and being supportive. In terms of direction, the people that work with Dan know the goal: to make the student athlete experience the best it can be. This can be by having a freshly cut infield, freshly raked sand pit, or a perfect turf. Dan cares about his work and the people that work with him. Dan works with a different mix and a number of people throughout the year. This is the strong structure that is important for demonstrating teamwork. Dan works with parents to set up tents in the fort parking lot, works with Lenny Perna to park vehicles, works with Dan Hartzell to get everything from the microphone ready to a number of other needed items per event. He is always willing to set up for any event, from homecoming to graduation, to make the event look nice and run smoothly. Dan is extremely supportive of the student athletes and his coworkers, no matter what the problem." In the area of commitment. Commitment is a promise to be loyal to someone or something. It is clear that Dan is committed to his job and his family. Dan shows up in the early weekend mornings to get the stadium ready. Some of these days can be long, especially if there are multiple events going on. Example would be getting the stadium ready for football games and prepping Hedges Boyer for the cross-country carnival, which is many days in advance, and as well as the day of. Plus, the day after competing, completing all of the events, one must do all the cleanup and return equipment and supplies. This is all part of Dan's job, but he always goes above and beyond. Never one to complain, Dan does what is asked, does it extremely well, and this shows his commitment to the students and the community. In the area of leadership. If leadership is the ability of one to influence other, others, Dan is a leader. Leaders demonstrate integrity, humility, empathy, influence, gratitude, and respect. As a grounds manager, Dan oversees a small group of summer workers plus Saturday morning workers. Overseeing these individuals and keeping them on task definitely takes respect and a special leadership skill. In the area of taking pride in his work. If one looks at Dan's work, you know he takes pride in it. If not, everyone would know. The ball fields are cut and groomed, the turf is ready for the Friday night lights, and the pit has sand and sound systems are ready to go. There is no question that Dan takes great pride in his work. In terms of outstanding accomplishments. Dan's accomplishments are not measured by a plaque or a medal. It is gauged by the number of students, sports teams, parents, and staff members that he has helped throughout the years. The award-winning playoff field, playing fields, Immaculate Stadium, and the events that run smoothly because Dan is behind the scenes. Thank you Dan for all you do, congratulations on your award. We're very, very proud of you and we are proud that you call Tiffin your home. Thank you Dan. Before I present Dan his certificate and his award, Mr. Kizabeth has a few words to say.
Dan, I wanna add my congratulations to you. You were not here in 2009. That was the last year that I was the principal the first time around. And we had a saying that year and was, "Do what you love, love what you do." You are an exact example of doing that. I know you love what you do and you do it great. Your energy, enthusiasm to give all of our kids and our coaches and our staff first-class facilities, your prep and your cleanup is unbelievably fantastic. I wanna tell you from the bottom of my heart, my year as the athletic director, I think 2018, I couldn't have done what I did without you. So, thank you very much. And Janet, wherever you are, thank you for allowing him to do what he does. He does an excellent job. Thanks Dan.
Well, thank you everybody. And thank you Chris for the kind words. Thank you to my wife and my kids. Job does take a lot of time and effort. Thank you for letting me work here and I truly enjoy it. Thank you.
Our second award winner is Mr. Jim Mason from Tiffin Middle School. Mr. Mason, would you please come forward? Jim was nominated by Sean Murphy. Jim has been an eighth grade science teacher since 2008 in the middle school. He holds a Bachelor of Science in Agriculture from the Ohio State University and obtained his licensure in middle childhood math and science education from Heidelberg University. Jim started teaching after 18 years working as a chemist in the private sector in which he brings all of that knowledge to his students each and every day. In the area of teaching, this is what Mr. Murphy had to say about Mr. Mason. "Jim pursues excellence every day and it begins with his preparation. Jim sacrifices his free time, often working with, working well after students have left, as well as working on the weekend to ensure his lessons and activities are meaningful and student-centered. Additionally, Jim organizes activities such as STEM fairs, science fairs, and out-of-town trips to provide student learning experiences outside of the classroom." In the area of commitment. "Jim is truly committed to serving all students at TMS. Not only does he build relationships with students assigned to his classroom, but he often strikes up conversations with those he encounters in the hallways and throughout the building. Often, we have students sitting in the office removed from class. Jim takes the time to check in on these students regardless of if he has them in class or not." In the area of leadership. "Jim influences and leads people through his actions. He is never too busy or too overwhelmed to acknowledge the efforts of others. He's quick to provide uplifting words and/or a funny comment to help lift those around him." In the area of student-centered. Recently, Jim received a picture of a drawing from a sixth grade special education student. That night, he shared this picture with his granddaughter who in turn drew a picture in response. The following day, Jim shared the picture his granddaughter drew with this sixth grade student. This sixth grade child is a special education student who receives the bulk of her instruction in a location away from most of her peers and away from many of our staff, including Jim. The details regarding how this student and Jim crossed paths are really unknown. However, Jim's willingness to engage with this child and develop a connection speaks to the concern and thoughtfulness he has for all students. In terms of accomplishments. "Jim is an outstanding teacher and a true asset to Tiffin Middle School. Jim is a caring teammate to his colleagues, a role model for all TMS students, and a devoted family man. Thank you Jim for all you do, congratulations on your award, and thank you for calling Tiffin home. We're very proud of you." Now, before I present Jim his award, Mr. Kizabeth has a few words to say.
I was, yeah, uh-oh, that's right. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you Jim. Jim and I worked together for a number of years on the same basketball staff. And again, the same adjectives fit Jim that I talked about with Dan, and that's energy and enthusiasm. And the great thing about what he did with his basketball kids is he took them from where they were and took them where they could possibly go. And that's a great tribute to him. In 20, I think it was 20, I don't know, 2017, I was the dean of students here, so I got to see you in the classroom Jim, which I didn't have the opportunity as a coach. But I saw the same skills in the classroom, the energy, the enthusiasm, and most importantly, taking those kids from where they were to where they possibly could be. That is a great talent and I certainly appreciate all that you've done for the schools and all that you've done as we've worked together. So, thank you very much Jim. And Pam, behind every good coach is a great wife, so thank you too.
Thank you, Mr. Kizabeth. It was an honor to coach with you. And you cannot believe how many times during my practice I'll say, "This is what Mr. Kizabeth said. He said he can make foul shots with his eyes closed because he's so mechanically perfected." So, but anyway, thank you so much. And Mr. Bose, wherever he went, thank you too. I'll try to make this quick. He said I've got five minutes, but I promise I won't talk anywhere near that long, if I can even read this. I got a really nice surprise tonight, you know? I've got a wonderful family. God has truly blessed me, I know that. I am so proud of my Mount Sterling family, as I call them, my Madison County people. My brother Ed and his wife Patty drove all the way up here tonight with my nephews Matthew and Mark and my great nephew Luke. And again, I am super proud of them, you know? I know my brother Bill's looking down from heaven right now and I know he's proud of me tonight, my parents who are with him. But anyway, this made this night infinitely more special than I could have even imagined. So, I thank you so much for coming up here. I love all of you very much. The people I had planned on thanking, I've got a little list here, I did type this up. First and foremost, I wanna thank my wife Pam. You know, it takes a lot of patience to be a coach's wife, hearing me come home and complain about the things that aren't going well in practice and, you know, all the things. But, you know, first and foremost, for supporting me 20 years ago when in the middle of a career, I decided I wanna do something different and become a school teacher because I taught Sunday School, I've worked in youth fellowship at church, I got the opportunity to coach fifth and sixth grade girls' basketball and even middle school kids. So, thank you so much for supporting me and letting me do that because that was not an easy transition at that point. And like I said before, always listening and being patient with me. You know, and being wisdom, you know? "Okay Jim, let's think of this a different way," you know? So anyway, great sounding board. Number two, my daughter Ashley, who I am super, super proud of and her family, Harper, my ball girl over there who always listened to me on the way home from ballgames and practice and, you know, I sounded things off of her. Ace, my grandson, who's got lots and lots of wisdom for his age, as Mr. Murphy will always say. And a super son-in-law, who again, is a great guy to talk to and I'm very proud of him. As far as Ashley goes, just one other thing. I say this and I mean this, I've learned more from my daughter than she ever learned from me. She's made me a much better teacher because she's taught me how to be compassionate and understanding. You know, I was raised by very conservative parents and some of the things that I used to think one way about, my daughters made me see things differently, which I mean, has helped me a great deal. Mr. Murphy, for nominating me for this. He's an awesome, awesome leader, you know? I mean, we are so fortunate to have him here. He inspires me every day. When things seem tough, he always seems like he's the fortitude and the strength that we all need. And that's what a good leader is. Mr. Bose, for hiring me several years ago and for being a wonderful principal that I could always count on. And I'm gonna go ahead and say this real quick because I'm under my five minutes. When my brother Bill passed away, I was here at school and my sister-in-law called me. And I went down to the office and I told Mr. Murphy and Mr. Bose, "I thought I could stay today, but I just don't think I can do this today." Mr. Bose took me into his office and he said he'd lost a family member not too long before. He gave me a big hug and he said, you know, "We're here for you, whatever you need." That was a very, very special day, I will never, ever forget. Thank you for all the wonderful teachers that I work with. This is a great place to teach. I mean, I'm not just saying this. These people up and down these hallways are amazing. They had a lunch for me today. They made cheesecake, which I shouldn't have had, don't tell Pam. But, these are incredible people. Their passion, when I found out I'd won this award, I'm like, wow. I mean, you know, considering the Considering the people I'm, I don't want to say competing with, but could share the same honor, I am very, very fortunate. And the most important of them all, all the kids that have come through here in the last decade, we have great kids here and I feel very, very honored to teach them. The true reward of our job is having students return for visits. When they show up here unexpectedly, or I see them at a ballgame and they come up and they tell me what they're doing, what I always tell them, I want to know where you are. When you walk out that door at the end of your eighth-grade year, that's not the end of it, that's just the beginning of it. And I've been so impressed and pleased with the things they've told me when they come back. So, my final word on that is we do make a big, big difference. So, I'm proud for this honor. It means an awful lot to me and I thank all of you for sharing my evening with me.
Thank you, Bob. We're going to move to the section of reports. And just a note that reports for committees are available online. So, you can see either summaries or minutes. We try to have those uploaded prior to board meeting or close to after. So, we will start with Dr. Gates.
Business Advisory Council or Committee did not meet this past month. They will meet March 24th at 8:00 a.m., site to be determined.
Thank you. Over to Mr. Perez.
We did meet Tuesday and the items we covered were the updated, again, financials and the income that we're going to be getting from the state. We also looked over the resolution that's going to be on the agenda today regarding the amounts and rates for the determined by the Budget Commission. If you recall, last meeting, we approved the budget that we sent to the commission. Now, we get back the actual tax numbers. I don't think there's any big surprises or changes in our fiscal position, so if you have any questions, I think Ms. Perry's going to present on this later down in the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. And the next one's you as well.
The Legislative Liaison Report. I don't have much to report on that House bill. It's on the agenda for discussion. And I did actually have an outline, but I left it in the truck. Where I would report is that bill is currently between the Senate and the House to be reconciled if they can do it. And that's where it's been sitting. It's passed both the House and the Senate, but two different versions, so they have to reconcile it before it goes to the governor.
Thank you. On to me. So, Support Services, we had a full House at Support Services on the 23rd. We went over a number of pieces. So, Support Services, Houses, a lot of different operations for the district. We had pieces on food service and there's been a fairly large transition of the tech that runs all of that, or the software, right? And that is up and going now. Did I say those things right?
Yes, you did.
Yes. And so, that has been a really large undertaking for that entire department. And now, it is up and running and should make things move smoother for them.
Correct. It'll help them order food based by the number of servings that we sell. It keeps track of that. We'll recommend you need 10 cases of this.
So, it keeps that inventory much more efficient for ordering purposes. We also had information from Randy over in Transportation. We received a grant for buses and so, we were able to purchase three instead of our originally planned two. There is a large need still for bus drivers. This will be a topic of discussion later on this evening. But revisiting the part that we talked about last year about this time, that there was going to have to be a shift in busing. We put it off last year in hopes that maybe we could get more drivers and it circled back. So, we will discuss more of those pieces, either looking at staggered starts or reduced services and distance area. And then, Mr. Daniels presented on the Maintenance Department Report. And there are some pieces that need to be replaced, including the concrete pad to be placed behind the plate for a solid scoring area. We're looking at bids for that. The front sidewalk leading to the main entrance of Columbia needs to be replaced this summer. Getting estimates for that. And still looking at the tennis courts and the court proposal by Garmin Miller. We need more information and while there are imminent needs to figure out, can they be practiced on or played on this season, anything we do needs to be in alignment with the strategic plan. So, we are still looking at those options.
Correct.
Did I miss anything?
No.
All right. So, then that takes us from Support Services to Records, which is myself. And we did not convene this month. So, then over to Student Achievement with Mr. Williams.
Yeah. So, we are regularly receiving the success newsletter from the Ohio School Board Association now, so that'll be distributed to the board members. Dr. Zalad and I forget to send that to you. Okay. I'll get that over to you tonight. Yeah, sorry about that. So, we have that now. And on Student Achievement, I want to start to bring some student body achievements to the board meetings to discuss, things that are going on in the district. I don't have any to share this evening. What I do have to share, though, is I was able to work with our principals to start building sort of a profile of our student body that we can use as the board, right? Not something necessarily to distribute to the community, but something for us as the board so we can better understand the student body. And we started with just the populations of all the different schools. Right. And I was, I'll say I was surprised. We've got 2,800, give or take a few, students, right? I thought we were closer to 2,500, but it's actually 2,800. And that includes Tornado Academy. So, that was a little surprising to me, right? I know 300 students isn't huge, but that's 10% off from where I thought we were. So, yeah, so we'll continue to build that out and start to share some of that and start to dig a little bit deeper into what some of those students are doing. Maybe we've got some scholarships. If we start talking about high school level, I know we've got students that are involved in different academic and athletic things that have had some achievements. So, now that we've got more of the student profile, we'll start to bring some of those things.
Thanks. The next one is also you.
Yep. Policy Committee, we had our first meeting last month. So, it was more of an organizational meeting. Every one of you should have a charter in front of you for the Policy Committee. So, this is where we spend a little bit of our time. I think we can probably discuss this in the New Business Section. So, when you get a chance down there, please take a look at this. The other thing we talked about was just the overall state of the Board Policy Manual and what some of our next steps need to be. We've reached out to OSBA to correct the recipient list for the PDQ to make sure that everybody who's on the Policy Committee is receiving that. I think we had some gaps there. We've also reached out to the OSBA to just kind of get a sense for what their hosting services are and what some of their other policy services are. I know we host our policy manual on our website, but we're just curious to see what their offerings might be, just in case it's something that we might want to take advantage of. So, largely it was an organizational meeting. We have decided that we will start with the Board section of the Policy Manual. It's Section B. I'll say it's easiest for us as the Board to consume, right? It's a fairly short section of the manual. And then, we'll start to look for things that are woefully out of date and sort of rank those and figure out which ones make sense that might need some urgency around getting updated. So, we'll continue to bring some of those to the Board for approval as we either want to just kind of reapprove as is or want to make some recommendations for changes.
Just from a historical perspective, I believe that when I was on the Board the first year, and Dr. Gates might know more about this, remember, we did look at Board Docs, I think, back then. And that was one of the price issues back then, using that to maintain our like whole internet thing.
Yeah. So, we'll get what some of their updated pricing is. Again, the manual's on the website now, right? You can get to it. If you know what you're looking for, you can find stuff, right? So, we're just curious what their current offerings are.
Thank you. All right. Our next one will be over to Gunther, I believe, right?
Yep. I attended the Vanguard Sentinel Board Meeting last Thursday, the 24th. Some of the things we discussed were the current COVID cases. At the time of the meeting, there were zero active staff cases. And in addition to that, daily attendance was a two-year-high of 93% as a result of the open houses that have been held by both of the facilities the last few months. There have been over 700 applications between the two schools. There's actually been an oversubscription in some of the courses and they're currently deciding how to combat that. There was another unexpected resignation at the faculty. This time, the Electrical Trades Instructor resigned. Applications are currently being accepted while the former Electrical Trades Instructor covers. There's currently progress being made on a renovation project. This project is going to target the Adult Workforce Building at the Vanguard Campus. The renovations are going to make the entrance not only safer but more visible and overall updating both exterior and interior surroundings. The Skills USA competition went great. The Vanguard Sentinel host site was one of the only regions in the state of Ohio that actually had in-person events. All the others were just paper tests. Many of the participants are heading off to the state competitions. There is currently discussion revolving about potentially adding a FIRE/EMT program in the 2023-2024 school year. This would only be possible if there's additional backing by some outside sponsors, but it's in discussion. That is all. Thanks.
Thank you. And lastly, our Student Representative Report.
Yeah. So, some recent events at Noble include the fourth-grade students taking a trip last Thursday to the Ritz Theater where they saw Freedom Riders. And the third-quarter PBIS Award will be held Thursday, March 17th, where students who have demonstrated good behavior over the course of the third quarter will celebrate with a short dance, snack, and recess time. And additionally, at TCHS, I would like to extend a congratulations to the basketball team and cheerleading program for the cheerleaders winning state and the basketball team winning the sectional championship against Rossford.
Awesome. Thank you both so much. That takes us over to our Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent Reports.
Thank you, Dr. McBride. I have one item on my portion of the agenda and actually, I'm going to defer that to Mrs. Coon. So, Ms. Coon, it's all yours.
Thank you. On March 15th, our juniors will be taking the ACT. It is our recommendation that on that particular day, we will not have freshmen, sophomores, or seniors attend. It will be a day where they do learning at home. By doing this, this allows us to break our students into smaller groups to give them the attention that they need for an optimal testing environment. There have been times when we've moved off-campus to do it, but in light of trying to move students with transportation and deal with subs, this seems to be the very best option for our students. And we always want to make sure we do what's best for students. So, March 15th, only juniors will come to school that day so that we can administer that test. Mr. DeVore and Mr. Trissler will be sending out information to families to remind them of that event. We're actually doing the ACT registration on Wednesday with our students. Any questions?
The agenda says ACT for sophomores. Did it mean?
It is incorrect. It's juniors.
Okay. So, March 15th, we've got to make sure our kids have access to remote learning, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions for Janet or Bob? Thank you, Jim. Just continuing on then with Superintendent to report, a couple items. Just thank you for those student reports. I did just want to mention that we had a very successful weekend, not just with basketball and cheerleading. We had our wrestling team had nine wrestlers that'll be advancing to districts as well and four sectional winners. And all kind of individual honors. So, I think we're planning for the March Board Meeting to recognize and invite a lot of these teams and students in to meet the Board. I just wanted to review just very quickly the results of the community survey. You'll remember that the Board agreed to partner with Paul Fallon and his organization to conduct a community survey. That survey was conducted the end of January. Mr. Fallon presented the results of the survey this past week to the Strategic Planning Advisory Group. And we have those results. The Board has seen those results. We'll be making the results available to the public after tonight's meeting. But I think a lot of really good information came out of the survey process. We had, Mr. Fallon said that one of the things that he was very impressed with was he did not have any trouble at all getting people to want to participate in the survey. So, he got a great response. We had over 300 people respond to his telephone inquiry and that's going to give us a very robust and statistically significant measure of kind of the pulse of the community right now. So, this survey will be used to inform the strategic plan. There were a number of areas that community members identified as being high-quality, focused areas of the current school system. And there were some areas, obviously, that we have opportunity for improvement and some challenges. So, I was very pleased to see in one area in particular that our community thinks very highly of, I think, two of the most important things that our school district provides. That is, number one, outstanding teachers and faculty members, support staff, that are working in our classrooms on a daily basis, taking care of their kids. So, 56% of our community members feel that the quality of our classroom teachers is either excellent or good. So, that's a very high response, a very strong response in favor of our classroom teachers and feel very good about that. Also, 65% of the community responded that they felt that the overall quality of the educational program was either excellent or good. So, those are, I think, two real strong indicators of the kind of support that's out there in the community. Obviously, there were other areas that we want to continue to improve on. Communication being a major theme that kind of ran throughout the survey. Listening to the community, another theme that ran throughout the survey. So, we're going to use that information to work with our strategic planning group and then really try to address those major concerns in order to help improve our school district. So, as I said, this information will be made available to the community after tonight's meeting. I know the Board has had an opportunity to see this. Here's, at least two Board members heard the presentation. And I wanted just to give this opportunity to the Board if there are any comments, thoughts, any discussion from the Board regarding the community survey at this time. I think this would be the appropriate time.
I think one of the things that is important to note about doing it this way is that we had a really great representation of our entire community because there are stakeholders who are parents and family members and educators or people who work in the district. And there are those who own businesses or run businesses or know that quality of district impacts everything within a community. And so, we had a fantastic representation of a variety of voices from the community. You know, the hard parts are hard to read. It's hard to read it. But it's really a call to action and it's a great way to be able to make decisions based off of that feedback. We don't have to try to make decisions and hope we get to use that to guide what we do. And I, again, just want to echo how stellar it was to see the really strong response to our educators and our staff and what they're doing. Because while there might be some decisions and some directions that we need to get right or better, those things are going really well and the community recognizes that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Was there any, you provided us a summary, right? Was there anything that came through in the survey that required any sort of immediate action? Maybe nothing having to do with strategic planning, but things we learned that we were able to act on immediately? Or is this all intended to be strictly contributing to the overall long-range strategic plan?
I think most of the information would fit I think most of the information would fit into that latter category. It's long-range planning, but certainly there are themes that, that ran throughout the survey such as communication. I mean, I think the need to tell our story and to communicate more often and more effectively with the community, I think that's an ongoing need, and we heard that loud and clear, you know, throughout the survey that people want to, they want to know more about what's going on in the schools. And so, I, I would say that that would be one area that I think we can certainly begin addressing and trying to implement a better strategy going forward right away.
And do you still plan to have like a session for the board to go over this?
We, we can do that. We can do a work session, or, you know, we, we did record the meeting, so you certainly have access to hear the presentation that way, but it just depends how the board wants to move forward after we have this information now.
Because I think we have the information, but it's like we might want to ask questions, and I don't know if this is the form to do it in or a form with the consultant there or, like, for example, I think the survey asked people, do facilities need improvement? I think was one of the questions. What was the definition of facilities? Because I was surprised by the results compared to the anecdotal evidence that was in there, the statements versus what people were saying on the survey. They weren't necessarily the same, so.
Yeah, there, there were some, some, some of the responses from the survey, and, and Mr. Fallon, he put that in his, his analysis, that there was some rather apathetic responses from the community regarding facilities and building conditions, which to me speaks to the, to the point that I think many segments of our community are not aware of the current conditions in some of our schools. And so, again, that's a communication kind of a piece. There also was a little bit of, I would say polarization or varying opinions around the whole concept of neighborhood schools and grade level configurations. So, that's something that came through loud and clear. You know, it was pretty much split, you know, down the middle in terms of how people feel. So, not a lot of consensus around those particular areas, and I, I don't know that, you know, having Mr. Fallon back to, to basically say that or present that is going to change anything. I think that's just something that we're going to need to come to terms with in terms of how we move forward.
Because I think with the neighborhood schools, it was about 51%, but only among Tiffin residents when you took, I think, is that what it was?
It was incredibly close. It was 43-45 for neighborhood schools versus not neighborhood schools.
Well, there was the cost. When you put the cost in, it changed, but it was different if you were in the city or not, and it was, so.
Well, and some of those pieces, it was really interesting because there were places where there was large divide, and one of the things, while we can't cor, you know, we can't say correlation causation, those pieces, but a lot of it came back to some of it, and you could see it in the comments, was we hadn't done a good job of explaining some of those needs, or we hadn't done a good job of explaining what some of the options were. And so, I don't know that necessarily our community is divided on it as much as our community doesn't know what our options are, or we, we missed some of those opportunities.
And I think the survey hit on something that I think noticed in talking to the community. A lot of people actually don't know what happens in our school. I think some of the comments were, even when I was in the general public, were validated by the survey, things like the mask that kids are forced to wear. It's like we didn't even have a requirement or, the way they see the national pictures being what they think is happening here because they weren't even in the schools, but the assumptions that they have, so.
I think Mr. Fallon did allude to the fact that the, the political environment that we're currently operating in is quite contentious on things like COVID and masking and those types of policies, and, you know, that needs to be factored into the overall response and tone of the survey as well.
So, this piece, we've really been waiting for, both as the strategic planning group, but also the, the board and the, the district and community. I know that the next steps are putting together a comprehensive strategic plan, which I think we're all excited about. What is the timeline for that?
Yeah, we're, we're currently involved in, you know, we continue our monthly meetings as a, as a larger advisory group, but we're beginning to break down into smaller thematic groups based on varying themes and operational issues that run throughout, you know, the, the operating of the district. So, areas like finances and curriculum and instruction, operations, facilities, technology, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion. We've identified a number of subcommittees, subgroups that will begin into, again, use this information and begin to develop specifically targeted plans for those areas. We're looking at probably this running through the, the spring. You know, I think we would be able to bring something to the board later this spring, certainly by the end of this calendar school year, or not calendar school year, but just the end of the school year, you know, May, June. And then I think that's what the plan for at this point is. You know, we were, I was hoping initially to, to have had, to be a little bit further along, but it's taking a little bit of time. And my, my, I guess, theory is, or my goal is that it's better to go a little bit slower and have good information and a good quality plan that we can put together and act on as opposed to trying to hurry something through and then not necessarily have thought it through very thoroughly. So, the spring, the end of the spring, the end of this school year is our timeline.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Zoller?
Is that your expectation for a, a final, like, proposal, or are we expecting a, a draft just to kind of be able to see the direction you're headed?
Yeah, I, I would expect a draft would be provided before the board, before there's any recommend, recommendation for, you know, adopting the strategic plan.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And just to clarify, I don't think we would need a work session in that, in that vein, so I guess you would tell us when the report's ready, because I think you guys are doing most of the work with the community, so.
I think this survey will be a great piece of data to work with in that strategic planning. I was very pleased with, I was, I was pleased with the questions. I was certainly pleased with the responses and the fact that it wasn't just parents, but it was a whole, the whole gamut of community members. So, I think this is a document that we can certainly digest and get to work with, with that strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zoller. This takes us on to Director of Operations, Mr. Daniels.
Yes, I have a couple of things I'd like to discuss tonight. The need for a food service assistant and a salary schedule to, to support that, because currently they have added an awful lot to the food service area with regulations. They get audited through the state as part of her audit, then they have a USDA audit, and then they have an ODE audit. So, she, they spend a lot of time trying to keep paperwork straight to make different groups happy, and sometimes the auditors between the three don't always agree on what they're seeing, that the other one says you should be doing or not be doing. So, there is quite a bit of paperwork that she's been going through. It's time to get her some help before the ship goes down, per se. So, we'd like to do that. And any questions on that stuff for later? Okay, and my next discussion topic was about checking for snow days or delays and how we go about that. Mr. Conger and myself both start out between 4:00 and 4:30 in the morning. I kind of go out in the Clinton Township towards the east, and we kind of meet up at the Clinton Firehouse while he goes north, and then we meet at the Firehouse. I'm in contact with all the local school districts, Faustoria, and every surrounding district that we touch, either with their transportation coordinator or with their direct superintendent, because some of them, that's who handles that job. After we get that, we talk about what we think, and then I make a recommendation to Mr. Zoller on what to do. Sometimes the timing, we try to get it done by 5:30. Sometimes it just doesn't happen that fast. Just, I also have to go around and check the building conditions to make sure the maintenance department's keeping up or going to be ready in time for us to do whatever we decide to do, so.
So, that's always like a, a really big point of conversation, right? Like, oh, well, we know that weather systems are coming in, why don't we make calls sooner? Or why don't we make them later? You know, we saw with the, the snowmageddon that was supposed to come, a number of districts closed really early, and that, that system pushed later and later. Can you speak to what you're looking for? Because y'all are out and driving at 4:00 and 4:30 a.m., the, the two of you are. And so, what things are you watching for?
One of the keys is I go out 100 sometimes, and I can see if the county garage is out starting to plow the roads, and they're normally pretty good. They're out about 4:00 o'clock. If it's, if there's any kind of conditions, they go out about 4:00. And one of the reasons we meet at the Clinton Firehouse is that's where they store their equipment for the township house, so I know whether they're out attending to the township roads in that area. And sometimes they are. He gets to go by, since he lives over by that general area, he gets to see what the city of Tiffin does. Sometimes they're out at 4:00, sometimes they come out at 6:00, sometimes they come out at 7:00. So, all that plays into a factor. Are we going to be ready to go after two hours, or can we go on time?
Well, and one of those pieces too is depending on each, either township or city or county or whoever is doing those, is they each only have so many drivers.
Correct.
And it has to, it is my understanding, and I might speak, I might say this incorrectly, so please correct me, but it has to be a, a declared emergency for them to bring in extra drivers because of the way that those contracts operate. So, they can only use the drivers they have. So, if it's a really large issue but not quite bad enough, then it's going to slow them down. And so, they might be out, but they're not going to get to some of those places as quickly. Did I understand that right?
Correct.
Yes. So, there's, there's, it's a lot more nuanced than we see the weather and we can make that call.
And fog's one of the ones that is very difficult because you never know. It could be foggy, so I'll get out, and 30 seconds later, it clears off, or you kind of hope the sun burns it off. Sometimes you take that into consideration while it's going to be light enough here in a little while, it'll start to burn off.
I think with the, the last few snow days, yeah, the snowmageddon, I think we canceled pretty early. Everyone else did. I think the only comments I got was like on the ice day, the week after, I think it was the Friday where they had forecasted ice, and it was raining most of the time, and we were on that cusp there. And I think the concerns are, yeah, we called it, and some parents were upset, but we still have walkers in the district.
Correct.
And so, like up on the north end, our sidewalks were pretty bad. Six's Corners was like impossible to cross, and so, we do have them, and there's also concerns that we do have student drivers. And do we want them, you know, on those roads at that point? Because snow's one thing, ice is worse. I mean, it was even chipping out of the car that morning was bad, and I think that's where parents express some frustration. Well, we could see the forecast had ice rain and, you know, and then we got the call at 6:00. Either way, I think most parents, I think if you've watched the weather yourself, you can see it and go, it's coming. So, you know, I think you guys announced the delay first and then the cancellation. So, either way, I thank you for the decisions you've made this year so far, so.
Yeah, the weather is, the weather has kept you busy this semester for sure, and I, it's nuanced, right? Like, I can look out of my window and it looks great because of the road I'm on, but then I think about my 16-year-old driving, and I'm like, ah, I feel differently, like I get a little worried.
One thing, when I'm, to all my teacher friends out there that are listening, I make this call for the kids. It has nothing to do with students, or with staff. It's, it's about keeping kids safe.
Well, and there's the, the regular joke is that Scotty wants a day off, but you still have to work.
Correct.
Even if we're delayed or canceled, right?
Correct.
So, it doesn't benefit you any.
Nope.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. All right, so then that moves us on to agenda item number six, which is the opportunity for the public to address the board. Per the policy, each person addressing the board needs to share their name and address. If there's numerous people who want to speak, you have three minutes for a total time of 30 minutes. If we're going over, then we can vote by a majority to extend it.
Hi, my name is Dawn Abraham. I'm on Siesta Drive in Tiffin. I know many of you through my employment with the Tiffin City School District, either as a substitute teacher or a yearbook advisor or a photographer for the district. But I'm actually here tonight on behalf of my daughter and as a parent for many other parents. I know that we have contracted, you have contracted with Life Touch Photography. A lot of parents from especially the fall athletic sports are upset because we still have not received our pictures. I can tell you from experience that I have my picture proof. I've called multiple, multiple times, starting in early October, and gave them about a month to get pictures to me. I've already paid. I ordered online, so they have my money, but they couldn't find my daughter's picture when I first called. And they basically told me, well, maybe your daughter didn't get your picture taken. Well, I know darn well she did. And I also called them again, and they claimed that my daughter didn't go to the school when she did. So, I then received the proof in the mail to reorder pictures, and I noticed that my daughter's name was Faith Robert instead of Faith Egbert. Well, on this proof that I have, you can see the portrait ID and the access code, so I called once again. Couldn't find it. Explained the situation that the last name was the wrong last name. They found the last name. I also described the picture in which she's standing on the field with a cement wall behind her, with her cheer uniform for football, with the football actually on her shoulder, and they said, oh, we've got your picture, don't worry about it. It may come with the wrong name on the envelope, but everything will be corrected. And this was after calling multiple times in October and November and December. Finally, I waited three or four weeks, and I received this picture of her for her football picture, which is actually her basketball pitcher, and her name now instead of Faith Egbert is Fahida Robert. The funny thing is, if you look at the, the megaphone, it says Faith right on the picture. So, I called once again, was on the phone for about another hour, and asked finally to talk to a supervisor, spoke to a guy named Dante, who assured me that I would get the pictures and that, that they were going to reimburse me for half of my picture cost. I'm still waiting on that, and to this day, I'm still waiting on my pictures. I did post, I don't usually post on Facebook anything like this, but it, it got to the point where it was actually comical with her name, so I posted on December 22nd on my Facebook page, and promptly about an hour into it, there was 52 comments from people who were upset, who did not get their pictures. Life Touch still has their money, and they were getting the runaround. So, I would implore you, please do something about this, and if you consider Life Touch in the future, consider them for our portraits. They did a great job with my daughter's portrait. I don't have a problem with it. I'm just hoping that the name is correct in the yearbook for that. But maybe split out your sports and your, and your school portrait pictures. It's been done before. I do have friends, I have a friend who has a redhead daughter, flaming redhead, and her picture, when she got it back, darker than mine. And if you look, and I can pass this around just so you can glance at it, if you look at some of the team pictures on here, you can't tell where a girl's hair stops and the uniform starts. So, the quality of picture is not that great either. And I do know from experience that in the past, when the company I worked for did take pictures, we had our fair share of complaints. I'm not going to say everything was perfect, but we addressed it promptly, and they got their pictures, and they got everything taken care of without any question whatsoever. I just feel like parents have gotten the runaround to the point where they're just going to drop it, but then Life Touch still has our money. So, that's what I have. Would you like to, like to take a gander at the pictures or, okay? I did even scan the picture in for the football picture and sent that to them via email, and I still haven't gotten the picture, so. It wouldn't be a big deal, but my daughter's going to be a senior next year, and I just want to make sure that we get her pictures.
Dawn?
Yes.
You scanned the picture of your daughter that they took?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And sent it back to them?
Yes.
And you still haven't heard?
Correct.
How long ago was your last call to them?
Uh, in late January.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
I'll ju, I'll just share this, the first time I'm hearing or learning of this, so I appreciate you bringing this information to our attention.
And if it wasn't just, if it was just me, I wouldn't be here. And I did contact Mr. Hartzell and Mr. Forrest Trissler, and they said to contact Life Touch, which number of us have been doing with no results.
So, we'll be following up. So we'll be following up with your
Thank you.
Your concerns, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Maybe you could just rename your daughter?
Right. Three different names, right?
There you go, yeah.
We're actually keeping that one and putting it on her table next year because she thinks it's funny.
I just love that it's Fahida, and then there's the megaphone with her name on it.
Right, right.
It's great.
And I know many of you know her, so.
Do any of our student reps have different names they want to tell us they use?
No. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thanks, Dawn.
Good evening. My name is Mark Stover, and I live at 1955 East County Road 36 in the great community of Tiffin, Ohio. Wow. What a high level of energy here earlier. Wasn't it great to hear and to see all the positivity? And wouldn't it be great to have it still here at every meeting? We need more people here, and hopefully we can get that to happen someday, because I think the more you have involved, the better we can be. I would like to thank the board for giving the general public and myself the opportunity to speak at our school board meetings, which is not required, but many school boards in Ohio allow them. We live in a great country with many freedoms, which we should be grateful for and willing to protect. Over the ages, history has repeated itself over and over again, just as we are witnessing now with the current world events. Many people believe that history should be forgotten and not have a part in our lives. I believe that we should not dwell on history, but there is much to learn from history. We need to live in the present while using our resources toward building a better future for the generations to come. That is exactly what I believe this board and we as a community need to do. We need to learn from the past, live in the present, and help build a future for others. Easy to say, but not easy to do, I know. It needs to begin somewhere, so I challenge you as a board to let it begin here. You must begin by building a rapport with the public and gaining their trust. This won't happen overnight. It will take time and energy, but it must be done if we as a school district and a community desire to move forward in a positive direction. Remember, learn from history, live in the present, striving to build a future for others. At last month's meeting, Mr. Willman spoke on different ways of marketing our schools, and I applaud him for addressing the board on this subject. I would like to build on that somewhat further. There are many avenues of reaching the public, and two of these were mentioned by Mr. Willman, the Advertiser Tribune and the Seneca News Daily. I contacted both, and both said they print school news free of charge. The Advertiser Tribune has 8,000 subscribers, which includes the online subscribers. The Seneca News Daily has 13,500 email subscribers and somewhere between 7,000 and 8,000 on Facebook, and some of those go back and forth, okay? I believe these would be good mediums to use to get some quality communication out to the community. I have noticed that Ben Gilligan has been posting a lot of nice comments on Facebook lately, mostly about student accomplishments. So I'd like to say, great job, Ben, and I hope this may inspire others to do likewise. I'm going to name some of these, but some of them have been mentioned tonight already, but I'm going to name them anyhow. Kinsey Slosser and her swimming records, the girls cheerleading squad capturing state championship, Logan Beeston and Bryce Burns scoring over 1,000 points in their career so far. Then this past Friday, our boys' basketball team advanced in the tournament and are now 18 and 5. In today's paper, I noticed there were nine tornado wrestlers qualifying for district, including Brody Conley, who improved to an incredible 46-0 record. The list could go on and on with all the positive academic, extracurricular, and social things within our school. I believe, I'm going to step out here a little bit, but I believe we should also congratulate Tiffin Calvert Boys Basketball Team, who advanced in their tournament and remain undefeated at 23-0. That's an astonishing feat with only one other team in their school history with an undefeated regular season record. So I would encourage you to use the free resources to the best of your abilities. In real estate, it is said that the three most important factors when buying a home are location, location, and location. I would like to say to the board that the three most important factors in reaching out to the community are communication, communication, and communication. And it all starts with listening. Remember, learn from the past, the history, live in the present, and strive to build a future for others. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Stover.
Hello, I'm Kelsey Weingart, 6th and East Township Road 1196, and this is my friend, Ashley Reinhardt. We are both juniors on the tennis team, and we are here out of concern for our tennis courts. They have become almost unplayable. There are cracks all over them, as well as dead spots where the ball just doesn't bounce. They're, they're also no longer flat. Whenever it rains, there are so many puddles that it takes us around an hour of work to dry before we can even step put on them to play. The retaining wall by the parking lot is crumbling onto the court so badly that we've had to physically take a broom and dustpan and sweep the crumbled cement off the court. There are even weeds growing in the middle of the court in some places. The truth is that these courts are just about the worst ones that we play on all year, and that's kind of embarrassing for us. I'm worried that we might not be able to play home matches next year, and I don't want to play my senior season without being able to play a match at home. This would hinder the development of our tennis program if we were no longer able to play tennis matches at home. And our tennis program has been doing really well. In the most recent guys' season, they were SBC champions and qualified three players to the district level. And our team in the past season were SBC runner-ups and also qualified three players to the district level. We are thriving at this point, and we need to be able to play on our courts to continue on this path of growth. What I want to say is that new courts or an improvement to the existing ones are not something that we want out of like greed. It's something that we need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Weingart, Ms. Weingart and Ms. Reinhardt.
Thank you, girls.
Just waiting a beat to see if there are any others. All right. Thank you all, for those who spoke and for what you brought to the meeting and to our attention. At this point, we'll move on to item seven, the consent agenda. I will read the numbers and the title and then call for a vote. 7.01, approve the minutes for the January board meeting. 7.02, approve treasurer's report. 7.03, employment. 7.4, employment with two corrections. 7.4, donations and grants. Thank you to all of those who donated to the district. 7.5, supplemental appropriations. Have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
Mrs. Perry?
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. All right, so this moves us on to action items. You will notice that for action items, Dr. Zoller will speak to each of these. For the public to be aware, we get all the full documents, we get all the MOUs or contracts, but that isn't always easy to see or easy to know if you just hear us voting. So you will hear Dr. Zoller speak to each of these. 8.01, approve family and children first MOU. Do you want to explain it before or after a motion?
After.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
And now discussion, we'll go to Dr. Zoller.
So this allows the district to participate with the Seneca County Family and Children First Council to provide out-of-school time services through the Impact After-School Program. Funding will be provided through a grant obtained by the FCFC for Summer Learning and After-School Opportunities Grant.
Thank you. Any further questions? Mr. Williams, I'm looking at you, I feel like I'm learning your facial expressions.
Is this something new or is this something we've done in the past?
It's something we've done in the past. It just allows them, they need our participation in their MOU, so they're able to go ahead and apply for the grant.
Any other questions? Ms. Perry?
Mr. Kizabeth?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. 8.02, approve frontline renewal for 2022 and 2023. We'll first do motions and then we'll do discussion.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you.
Yeah, this is just an annual renewal of the program that the district uses to manage our absence and substitute management system.
Thank you, Dr. Zoller.
Is this the system that notifies a parent when their kid's missing from school that day? No, right?
This is another name for the ASOPS program. It's a program that's been in the district for a while. It really alleviates a lot of the seven o'clock secretarial work to try to find substitutes because teachers can, can call in the night before if they're sick or five o'clock in the morning, and this goes out to all the substitutes and so they can check in. So it's a very efficient system.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Ms. Perry?
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. 8.03, approve NCO ESC program contact for student well-being and family support specialist services for 2022.
So moved.
Second?
So this is a contract with the North Central Ohio Educational Service Center for student well-being and family support specialist services for fiscal year '22. This allows the district to have access to Jill Miller, you met her earlier in the program, so that she can serve additional days in the district to provide for more mental health support services for our students. The cost for these services would be provided through federal ESRS III funding.
And she shared a report out earlier in the school year about the increased need that we're seeing.
Absolutely.
So we've got the, we've got the evidence and the data to back that up.
And this contract is for services with our school district?
Correct.
From the SC.
Correct.
Any other questions or discussion? Ms. Perry?
Mr. Kizabeth?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. 8.04, Adopt Ohio Schools Council Cooperative Resolution to Advertise for School Bus Bits. We'll do recommendation, well, we'll do
Motion.
Second?
Thank you. Mr. Daniels?
Yes, this authorizes Randy to reach out to bid for three buses using $46,000 worth of grant money per bus. So that keeps us right about what we normally spend for two, two buses, so it's a good plan.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Any other questions?
And these are just bids for replacements for aging equipment?
Correct. We're on about a 15-year cycle.
You have them scheduled out, each one that you, each
Correct.
Annually that you do it? You have a schedule that you do it on?
Yes, every two, two buses every year, except for this one because they're giving us extra money.
Thank you.
Generally, in 15 years, how many miles are we talking per bus?
Over 100,000.
Well over 100,000. They've normally, bodywork used to be the main reason back in the day.
I remember, I think last meeting, we approved like buses with air conditioning, these won't have it though, correct? We are. Okay.
Correct.
Those would be for special, special needs students.
Any other questions or discussions? Ms. Perry?
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. 8.05, adopt the resolution authorizing 22, 23 membership in OHSAA.
So moved.
Second?
Yeah, this is just an annual renewal of the district's membership in the OHSAA, which allows our students to participate in their program and in those competitions that we saw, we had a number of, like our girls cheerleading won the state championship and so forth, tournaments, things like that.
And to be in each of those, we need to be a part of this.
Correct.
Thank you.
And that's for grades seven through 12.
Any other discussion or questions? Ms. Perry?
Mr. Kizabeth?
Yes.
Mr. Perez? Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. 8.06, approve the Titan School Solutions Merchant Agreement.
Motion.
Second?
So this just, this provides or allows the district to have access to their payment management services for Food Service Department?
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Zoller or maybe Mr. Daniels?
How, how does that, was that like a, a charge card or how does that work?
It works a lot like the current system that we used all them years. The only difference is this does a lot more on the backend side where it helps her plan the orders and stuff like that. Much smoother operation. And will come out of food service funds.
All right. Thank you.
A lot of pieces that they're doing over there in food services now is really working on making it a more efficient process, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Ms. Perry?
Mr. Perez? Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. And then not 8.07? So 8.08? Or does it need to be 07?
Regarding 8.08?
8.07 was removed.
I abstain from any discussion or vote on this. I actually work for the Seneca County Department of Job and Family Services, and I disclose that to everyone.
Thank you. So 8.08, Mr. Perez will be out of the discussion or voting. Approved Department of Job and Family Service lease agreement?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you.
So this allows the district to provide available classroom space at Lincoln, partner with the Department of Job and Family Services. The space will be utilized in emergency situations for placements, placements of students or children in need at no cost to the district or no cost to Job and Family Services.
Thank you. Any questions?
This looks like an excellent program. My question would be, is there bedding available at Lincoln? Because if it's an overnight program, you have to have someplace to sleep.
I think it's more designed that in the middle of the night, if they had a house fire or any other major tragedy, they could go there and get cleaned up and get around for accommodations that somebody
Okay, not necessarily sleeping there. Gotcha.
Not necessarily sleeping, but a place they can take them any hour of the day to get cleaned up and
Okay.
So more of a landing spot as they head to their next space. So more of a landing spot as they head to their next space.
Thank you.
So these may or may not be students, is that correct, of the district? Okay. So from a building security perspective, right, we can't just walk in and out of buildings. Is there accommodations to keep them separate from the student body? Do we need an accommodation at?
Yeah, we'll, we'll need to develop a policy around that and make sure that that indeed is organized and the safety is certainly first and foremost in terms of our intentions around that. So that's correct.
And it's more so, at least my understanding is it's more so, it would be outside of business hours, outside of hours or times when other things would be available. So it doesn't look like there'd be a ton of overlap, but we'd need something in place in case there is.
Correct.
Generally, it's saying between 5:00 PM and 8:00 AM. So that's basically outside of the time that any of our kids would be using that building.
But we want to make sure that things are locked and secured and we're not.
Correct. And there is a 24-hour-a-day surveillance system there.
Thank you. Any others? Ms. Perry?
Mr. Kizabeth?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Abstain.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. 8.09, approve the food service assistant supervisor job description and salary schedule. This is some of what Mr. Daniels spoke to in his report.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
So enough. Mr. Daniel, you want to?
Yeah, this makes it so we can get an assistant food supervisor and that will, the funds will come out of the food service fund, not out of the general fund.
Because all of the food service funding and finances, they're all independent. They're theirs.
Correct.
So there'll be an assistant food supervisor, a food supervisor, and a secretary. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is the secretary position still there?
Yes.
Okay. And it'll all be funded through food service?
Everything is funded through food service.
Okay, thank you.
And it'll, it'll all help with managing some of the, because we have a number of grants that, in government programs. That have a ton of reporting requirements and it's kind of drowning under reporting at this point.
Yes.
But to clarify, I think when you say food service, I believe, Ms. Perry, we mean federal money, correct? Is there flow-through money?
The USDA reimburses us for meals that are served. So that's how it's federally funded. So we have the federal audit, we have the state audit, we have the, as you mentioned, the USDA audit, that would be the federal audit.
Plus your local audit per se.
Right. And the financial audit.
So some much-needed support in that department.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Ms. Perry?
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. 8.10, approve camp invention agreement.
So moved.
Second.
So this just allows the district to partner with the National Inventors Hall of Fame for their opportunities to look for future grant funding for camp invention, which our students take advantage of.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
I think Dustin mentioned earlier, this does include students that aren't in our district, but allows for a lot of other kids to come into our district. It showcases us, and we've done this for several years and it's a great event.
Yeah, I think more than one of my boys has participated. Dr. Zoller, could you describe the difference between 8.10 and 8.11, just so we're clear?
It's really just, I think, the age, the age of the students. That's primarily the difference.
So two similar programs, different ages, though?
Correct, correct.
Any further questions? Ms. Perry?
Mr. Perez? Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. Brings us on to 8.11, which is approve invention project six to nine.
Just same thing, except it's grade six through nine.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Perry, or any discussion or questions? Sorry. Ms. Perry?
Mr. Kizabeth?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. 8.12, approve IT savvy proposal.
So moved.
Second.
So this, this allows our technology department to make the necessary upgrades to our network. This is a district initiative. It's paid for out of the general fund. Mr. Weber has provided each board member some additional detailed information. This is a relatively significant allocation of funds, but it's absolutely necessary, well overdue. You know, we're getting behind with our technology infrastructure, so it's time to, time to make this upgrade. If anybody has any technical questions, or Mr. Weber's here and he can speak to those.
And with this, I think it is of note that there is a balance we have to work with that is allocated just for these specific purposes. Mr. Weber, I'm looking at you. You're nodding in the affirmative.
I think the summary sheet is really important. It says he put out 470, contacted 470 vendors. We've got two proposals. This does seem expensive at 116, 866, but the other proposal is 149,402. And I think what you outline is the supporting devices are the routers, I believe. They're going to run 540 client devices at Tiffin-Columbian, 419 devices at the middle school, 181 at Kraut, 125 at Washington, 27 at Lincoln, and I missed a 257 at Noble. So this is, it's small. And for like our architecture, our, our network, how long do you foresee this keeping us up to date?
By updating this, this should get us to at least 2025. The reason why I say that is because the devices that we're moving on to for next year, the Chromebooks, they're going to be using the CAT 5G6 and G, or CAT 6 for next year. They're going to be using the Wi-Fi 6 and the, eventually we'll be going to Wi-Fi 7, but that's down the road. Each year, the devices are getting more and more advanced and we have to stay with that. If you also look at the last time that we did an upgrade, it was in 2018. That was the entire infrastructure of the district. A lot of the schools didn't have Wi-Fi. We advanced and put Wi-Fi in each classroom. We also put the upgrade to the Colombian High School. We went from CAT 5E to CAT 6E, and we put five cables into each classroom so we could look forward to adding more drops into each classroom for cameras or security or whatever we needed to put in there. We also advanced into the middle school and put new switches. And we also made the advancements with our fiber. We are now fiber-to-fiber with each building and, except for Lincoln. And we're having problems with that because of, we have to get permits with the railroad. And due to COVID right now, we're a little, we're having issues. They don't want to work with us. We have to make advancements like seven months in advance to be able to make those arrangements. So we're working on that. But as far as the devices go, we're looking at 200 access point differences as far as upgrades. And we're looking forward to having a little higher speed. I know there's some people that are complaining, mostly students, about the speed and everything, and we're working on that.
And also, it looks like 60% of this is covered.
Yes, yes. Where the district is awarded, for five years, it's awarded $460,000. That's just for networking. We can't use it for anything else. And we are able to use 60% of that because of free lunches.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Any other questions for?
And I think we just, I discussed this before the meeting, this can't come out of either the permanent improvement or some other fund. It has to be general revenue, the difference?
They'll come out of my funds.
Okay.
My budget.
I have a question. In the, the document you provided us, it, the, the acceptance conditions around it were, were a little vague. Are we going to have any, anything more specific about accessibility in certain areas of the schools that might be lacking right now or any minimum speeds we intend to achieve in classrooms or, or anything like specific areas of the school where we don't care if there's coverage?
That, that's with the new devices, the new access points. They're called smart devices where they'll be able to, you'll have a device, let's say you have an access point in room 208 that's not being used that much. It'll actually be able to compensate for another room where there may be a full classroom and they're using streaming as well. That device in the other room will be able to help that device as well. So it'll be able to hop off.
I was more thinking more specifically, the, the document, I think, says the completion will be based on our acceptance. I wonder if we're going to have any stronger language in the document regarding what acceptable is? Just overall quality of service, right? So we're, we're doing this to improve the overall quality of service of.
Yes.
Right? So, so what is a, the, what is the minimum of the quality of service we're looking for? Are we going to be able to provide that?
Yes, we will be able to provide that. You'll see a difference in the, in the, in the speed, definitely. As I was saying in the beginning, when we did our upgrade, we didn't have streaming. We didn't have one-to-one. And we were not, we had maybe about four carts at the high school and maybe two carts of Chromebooks down here at the middle school. And I think we've made quite an advancement since we put the network up to speed. I think we've kind of made some major jumps since the beginning. So you should see a big difference once we get to the new access points. As far as a guarantee or anything like that, I, I can't really give you that guarantee myself, but as far as the technicians, the contractors, we have worked with them before. And as far as giving you the, the complete guarantee, I, I can say that you'll see a difference in the speed.
Then from our administrators, the increased bandwidth and speed, is this something our district needs going into the future? I mean, we just saw we're going to the one-on-one with the, with the Google Books, the Chromebooks. We have the students, I know they're not happy with the downloading speed or the streaming, but I think they actually use it, so in class. So is this a must that we have to have?
Absolutely. This just keeps us on par with, with the development of technology. So yes.
I'd love to see a contract that has some minimum quality of service in it.
I can, I can get, try and get that for you if you'd like.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, but if we did that, then we can't approve that contract today unless you want to do it. They, they won't, they won't add it on after we approve it and sign it, so.
When are we planning on doing this work?
The summer.
Okay, so if, if we wanted to get some of that in here, we could.
I will, I will say that due to what's going on presently in the news, it's getting harder and harder to get devices, especially overseas. So the longer that we put off any contracts or ordering any technology, the harder it's going to be to get it in, in time.
And they could change their price as well, then?
Yes.
I mean, I think the devices were about 1,000 to 1,500 each, so those could just go, yeah, higher than that.
Yeah.
And readily available to the public, so we'll be completing with the.
We can certainly provide additional information. As you can see, this was the best, most cost-effective solution for us. We didn't get a lot of response in terms of submission of bids. So I think we're somewhat limited in that area. And as Mr. Weber said, we don't want to get behind a time, you know, backup where we can't have this ready for the 2022, 2023 school year.
And it does, it does say in this contract that it'll be evaluated and monitored by, I believe you are the, the point person on this, and that you have to sign off on it as accepting the work.
Correct. And they will also make sure that they stay there and they also set up everything to make sure it does work. They did say that they would come in and do a walkthrough before they take everything out and replace it to show us the difference.
And so it seems like with the language around you needing to accept it and you being the, the person who is the checking quality control on it, I don't want to miss out on the opportunity to get in this work for summer to, to get us updated. But also, if we could get some updated language from them on some of those options that you have or ways to, what your options are if you're not happy, I think would that touch on those pieces that you're curious about?
We need to define what happy means, is the problem, right? We wouldn't enter into a contract like this to build a building, saying, we'll evaluate it and when you're done and let you know if we're happy, right? We would have very strict, very strict language in something about exactly what is to be built and what done means, right? So simply installing the devices isn't good enough. They have to be installed for a reason. And us feeling like the speeds are better is, is not quantifiable, right? So it's, it's qualitative, right? So, you know, I don't know if we have an addendum, right? I understand that, I understand the situation with the equipment, right? I mean, it's, it's part of my day-to-day life, right? So yeah, if those devices can go away tomorrow, right?
Well, and that was, I think, when we looked at the proposal, I was like, it was a very difficult proposal because it didn't get to the actual things that we had in the outline for Mr. Weber, which was what are the devices we're getting, what are we, the quantity, what are the expectations? So it was just, it's a difficult proposal. I think it's so kind of, I'm not going to say vague, but it was, yeah, in terms of our expectations.
Any other questions on as it is? It, there's an, there's an option to not, not approve it, which is, you know, each board member can vote, but we can also request an addendum as well or for you to follow back up with those pieces as well.
The, the other option would be to table it, but I don't know if we have time to do that either. We'd be back in a week to two weeks. So.
So we'll vote and see where we are?
Mr. Williams?
No, not in its current form.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. 8.13, adopt resolution accepting amounts and rates as determined by Budget Commission.
Ms. Perry? I'll make the motion first.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Perry.
All right. The annual resolution to accept the tax amounts and the estimated revenue is on pages 70 through 73. And we reviewed this with the Finance Committee first. This is an annual formality so that we can levy the taxes that have already been voted and approved by our taxpayers. On page 71, you'll see Schedule A, and this just includes all of the funds that request taxes on our annual tax budget, which was approved at our organizational meeting and then submitted to the Budget Commission, who then uses that information to set our tax rates and revenue estimates. So you can see that we have four funds that collect taxes, the general fund, permanent improvement, the bond for the middle school, and classroom facilities, which is related to that bond issue. In the last two columns, you can see the tax rates. Column four, we have four mills that are set by law. Those are always set at four mills regardless of what happens to our valuation. Our other millage, 52.43, those are the voted mills, and they are subject to reduction as valuations increase. On page 72, Schedule B lists all of the tax levies that we currently have in place. Those are listed at their full maximum rates that were voted. The, not much has changed on here except for the bond issue toward the bottom. That is expiring next year. Our final payment for the middle school debt is on December 1st next year, 2023. So this millage has been reduced as that bond retirement fund has accumulated some excess funds over the years collecting the taxes to pay that debt. So the original, back in 2000, that millage was 1.56 for the construction and 0.69 for the site. And the county auditor is reducing it all the way down to just a total of .6 mills because she's only going to collect what we need to pay off the debt. We don't want any excess money sitting in that bond retirement fund. That's not allowed by law. And then the only other one that changed slightly was the emergency levy, which is the last one. which is the last one listed. It was originally five mills back in 2004, but as valuations increase, it's reduced to raise one million, six hundred forty thousand dollars per year. That one was actually increased from three point nine mills to three point nine one just because there was a slight decrease in agricultural valuation. So when that went down, she just had to bump that up a little bit to make sure that we raised at least one point six million dollars. So our total mills are fifty-six point forty-three. Those are the full rates, but that's not what we're actually collecting. Because valuations have increased over the years, we are collecting thirty point two three mills in order to raise basically the same amount of money as when these rates were voted. So we're collecting fifty-four percent of our maximum rates. They have been reduced to twenty-six point two mills over the years. As far as the county auditor's estimate of the yield from those levies or the revenue estimates in the last column, a total of fifteen million, two hundred fifty-eight thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars. Part of that is the general fund. And then we also have revenue from the permanent improvement levy, the bond issue as I spoke about, and the classroom facilities that goes with that. Not much has changed here because our valuation was relatively flat over all of the categories. The general fund, she is estimating will see an increase of only thirty thousand, seven hundred dollars from this collection year to next. So, and I did not forecast a increase in the five-year forecast. So the forecast should be about accurate. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
So, Sharon, you said that the agricultural valuation dropped?
Yep, that went down, residential went up. So those kind of offset each other, which over the past few years, we've seen increases, some of them significant.
I found rather significant the number, the amount of exempted properties.
That increased.
Like substantially. In fact, that was from a strictly quantitative number is the largest change. That is, basically, we lost valuation then, right? Am I right in saying that?
Yeah, and I think commercial, did commercial go up or down?
Commercial went down one point six percent. Industrial went up six point seven percent.
Yeah.
But yeah, we, we lost quite a bit of exempted. So, so could you just give us an idea what the exempted properties are?
Exempted properties are gonna be anything owned by the school district, anything owned by any governmental entity, any religious organization, and any educational institution, even if that's private. So both colleges would have, all of their properties would be exempt.
Of those listed, what would you say would be the largest contributor to that?
With not having that data in front of me.
I mean, I don't see any new churches going up, I don't see any.
I probably would assume it's the colleges.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
And that's year-over-year, right? So we're comparing last year to this year, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Perry? Thank you for gathering all of that and walking us through all of that. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabet?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. Takes us to eight point one four, approve Westfield Consulting Group agreement for TCS administration.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
So this allows the district to partner with Westfield Consulting to provide leadership development training for our administrative leadership team.
Absolutely.
Is that associated with the insurance company?
No, no.
It's the same location?
Same, yeah, I think they're located in the same
Okay.
community, but it's separate, different company.
Any other questions?
And this is just for working with leaders in the district to just build that general skillset of leadership, correct?
Building leadership capacity with our leadership team, yes.
Ms. Perry?
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabet?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. Takes us to our last agenda item for action items, which is eight point one five, approve Westfield Consulting Group agreement for Tiffin City Board of Education.
So move.
Second.
So this is same, same company, same idea, just providing leadership development training for the Board of Education.
And I'm excited for this one. It's something that you and I talked about with you coming on and that I think it would be a great place for us to work together and, and grow as a, as a board. And we have, I don't want to, I think I'm right, but we have funding for, specifically for board development, correct?
The Board Service Fund can, that is set aside at the organizational meeting can finance this.
So this would come out of that budget then?
Yes.
Will it affect conference then, or no?
No, it shouldn't.
Any other questions? Ms. Perry?
Mr. Kizabet?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. This brings us to our next part of the meeting, which is our second opportunity for the public to dialogue with the board. Rules are similar. This is opportunity to discuss issues or policy or programming, not to be argumentative or to discuss personnel. This dialogue can go back and forth between the board and individuals who come forward.
If I may, before he steps up real quick, we've noticed a lot of cheers for everything our students are doing. We left out the bowling team, so they've, I think, advanced people as well, so. And we have the musical coming up, right, Mr. Cole? When is it? Last weekend of March, first weekend of April. Come and see Chicago and support our students.
And the choirs and the band are in contests this weekend in Oak Harbor, the choir on Friday, the band on Saturday. And we have, did you say bowlers going on?
Bowlers.
And I think the swimmers had, swimming and diving had people in the districts.
We're rocking.
A lot of good things going on in Tiffin City Schools.
Check that mic, Mr. Wangard. I don't think so.
It wasn't on, sorry about that. I'm also a teacher at Columbian High School. I'm the coach of the, both girls and guys tennis teams and an assistant boys' basketball coach and a proud parent of three Tiffin City Schools kids, one of whom will be moving on along with these fine gentlemen up here in way-too-short of time. So, I want to give you a quick update on the tennis courts. Kind of look at where we are and then where we're going. I don't need to talk about everything that was talked about earlier. Basically, we have a new problem that's happened and I actually walked down on the courts today after hopefully our last snowstorm or ice storm of the season. What has happened over the winter time is we basically had a bubbling of the courts. And I'm not good enough at construction to understand the terminology, but basically there's an asphalt layer below and then it is kind of top coated with the surface that makes it a true tennis court. And I think it's about an eighth of an inch thick, that top coating. And there's been bubbling across many parts of the court. Actually, down on court, what I call Court Five down by the baseball field, it actually, where it bubbled up, cracked. So I went down, as I was looking at it, I was able to stick my thumb underneath the bubble, if that tells you how much it's bubbled up. Now, we are hoping, I am hoping that as it warms up here in the next week, we, that that will go down. Hoping. But what that leads to is dead spots on a court. And when you play a sport where about ninety percent of the balls hit, bounce before you hit it, dead spots are not a good thing. You know, in the old Boston Garden, having a dead spot on where the Celtics played was kind of a character of the court. It's not so much a character of the court on tennis courts, it's a little more difficult to deal with. So my hope is it goes down and we can play our matches here at home, you know, this spring and next fall. I know Mr. Hartzell's looking into alternatives in case we can't.
Can I, I'll speak to why, why it's, or where it's bubbling. Several years ago, we redid the courts. And at that time, what they did with any asphalt cracking, they covered it with a mesh coating before and smoothed it out before. And that, this winter, definitely caused major issues with that. It definitely has started to bubble.
Yep. So I'm glad we have people that can talk in more detail about what that is. You know, we're dealing with a fifty-year-old complex basically down there. Norwalk High School's in the same situation. They had their lower courts, which were four. They decided they were too bad to play on and they were either gonna redo those. When I say redo, I mean start from scratch over there or build new. They elected to build five new courts as opposed to trying to redo those four. I wish I would have those four bottom courts they had there, because they're actually a little bit better than ours are right now. But they knew where they were going and it wasn't gonna be too long for me in the same boat. You know, we've had to replace turf, you know, we had to replace track. These things happen, you know, with, with age of a facility. The program's been doing well. Actually, I had a USTA representative contact me about two weeks ago, hoping I could run some programs with them to offer some things for youth in the community in the summertime, which is a great opportunity to get USTA behind some things going on here in town. I've held off giving a firm yes or no until I find out what the courts are like because it's a little tougher to do those things somewhere else where you might not have restrooms available or water available, things like that. So I'm holding off on that. But with USTA, I did make contact, actually yesterday. They do have some grants, very small, not to get anybody excited, that they can put towards new courts. And they will also help with any designing. And when I say new, I mean a redo or a building of new courts. So I'm more than willing to help look at all possibilities. So that's the where we're at part. The where we're going, there, all I'm asking for is we have to have a sense of urgency now because we are at that point where we have to do something to help out our students. The courts are safe to play on. There's not a safety issue yet, the cracks are getting bigger. You know, we can practice and we'll know better here in a couple of weeks, you know, where we're at right now. But I don't have the answer where we're going. It has to fit into our long-term vision. I wholly agree, a hundred percent agree with that. And I'm just willing to offer my assistance to the process. So feel free to use me however I can be used to help us move along whenever we decide what direction we're going. So.
If I may, or you want to go first?
Let me ask a question.
Go ahead.
So the tennis courts have been a really big topic of conversation. I'm aware of for the, for the last year, for sure. We've, it's been a back and forth on do we, do we build new? Do we fix where we are? And some of those come, you know, some of those, it's a really large investment and a really large need. The program's thriving, we want to have this opportunity for our teams, but also for the, the community. I don't think we have a, do we have a community tennis court? One community tennis court. So there's a lot of need, but figuring out where and how many and what to do there. With that sense of urgency, and I'm not sure if this is a coach question or a Mr. Daniels question.
We can share the answer.
Perfect. So if we break ground now, wherever we break ground, when would tennis courts be done?
Hopefully would be for the start of the spring season, a year from now.
So.
I mean, I think you'd be hard-pressed with the way the economy and things are going that we would get everything we need to have tennis courts for the fall.
So we have.
I'll just be honest about it. I know you're disappointed in that answer, but I'll, we'll give the honest answer.
But it helps us know what that urgency looks like.
Yes.
It's like, is this a decision that needs to be made yesterday? Or could even be to be able to do something for this season right now? Or do we need to be helping to support you in alternative spaces or alternative options? And while we find, while we figure out these long-term things. I guess I'm trying to figure out urgency and what that, how we support you in that and you us in that. So even if we made this decision yesterday, we'd still need something in place for the spring and the fall season.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And it sounds like, it sounds like the condition of the courts is such that you may be able to play in spring. But does much happen? Winter's obviously hard on anything outside. Do you have a similar problem over summer where the fall is a, you know right now it's fall's a no-go or you're not sure?
No, if it's good in the spring, it'll be good in the fall, you know? Now, could it be not good in the spring and as the temperature really warms up, be okay? Yes, I did contact two other coaches today, two longtime coaches, one at Clyde and one at Norwalk, because I took a picture of my thumb in the, in the part of our court where it fit there. And I said, have you guys had this happen? Because between the two of them, they have coached for, well, one has coached for about thirty years at a school and the other's coached for about twenty years at a school. And one immediately fired back, no, which was not a good thing. And one said, yes. And as a coach at Norwalk, it's happened on their lower courts, but it hadn't happened on the actual, it was back by the fence. It wasn't actually on the plain surface where balls are hit. And so he didn't, he's like, he said he really didn't notice if a ball would bounce there or not afterwards because they're not supposed to bounce there, if that makes any sense. Yeah, and the urgency is more for, you know, even if we wanted this, knowing nothing can be done, replaced or by this spring or even this fall. I would think, though, we'd have to make a decision in the next two to three months because obviously if there's any construction that would be done or things torn up, they won't be doing it over the winter next year. You know, so if our goal is next spring, there's, you know, you would know the timeframe may be a little better than I, but maybe not about how much time we have to work with if we want it done by next spring.
We had some bubbles in the track. Can these mesh areas that are bubbling up on the tennis courts, can they be fixed to get us through a season?
I don't think so. I don't think there's anything, but I can check with the court smith who did the work eight, ten years ago. And at that time, told us this was the last repair to that set of tennis courts.
And that was ten years ago.
It's around that eight to ten. I would have to pull out some of my old photos I have in my classroom to be able to tell that for sure.
And the last time it was actually paved was nineteen eighty-five when they added the fifth court.
Nineteen eighty-five, okay, thanks.
And I believe then there wasn't anything done with the drainage underneath, which is the main problem. When you have long cracks, straight line cracks on a tennis court, that means you have problems with the drainage underneath the facilities, what we were told
Correct.
last fall. And that's kind of where we're at.
So first of all, I'd like to thank one of your players. He let me hit on the court with him today and it was something different to play on the court. It's, I haven't seen a court bubble like that. There's areas that are like, they look like snakes or hoses. And the ball just doesn't bounce off of there, so you're gonna get a lot of aces, I guess, or, because tennis is about getting the height and where you get the bounce and it's not where you expect it to be. The posts are all sagging, so your nets aren't really at proper height either. But this has been an issue that's been going on. I know I asked about it before and they were talking about the, the big plan and where to put them. The only thing is I think it's support services. You came back with a number for what was envisioned originally for the dream court, which was gonna be over a million, I think we saw that coming in. And, but we did budget about three hundred thousand, I think, in the, out of the permanent improvement fund.
Correct.
Correct. If, I think something has to be done sooner than later on those courts. It's not just because we're trying to help those ten or twelve kids, but we have a duty to maintain our facilities. And that's, we can see it happening, what's going down there. And you can tell there's a problem with water drainage and it's just not a good facility. And it's, it's what we want our district to look like. Do we want it to look like this is what we do with our facilities, all of them? Or, you know, we're, I don't think we need to do the best of the best, but this isn't even best of the best. We need something safe, that's appropriate, and we have to take care of our facilities. But I think in talking to Mr. Daniels, too, one of the issues we just saw Fostoria do was they're redoing their bathrooms, their turf. We probably have better turf, but we have to do that. These are the 2020s, we have to update our bathrooms, we have to update our courts, we have to update things just because, it's the same as a house. You would fix the windows, you would fix the doors, you'd fix the sidewalk. So at some point, I know we're waiting for strategic planning, but we, we have to start meeting some of our needs at some point. And I would ask the administrators to like, make decisions, you know, if you want to move the courts or the fields to where you think it's appropriate and we have the budget to do it out of permanent improvement, then I think we have to do something at some point. Understanding that, you know, I know we're gonna have this. Understanding that, you know, I know we're going to have this grand plan at some point, but we, we just can't wait until everything gets out of control. So that's, that's what I would say.
That's sort of why I was asking if we were going to be able to see a draft of a strategic plan because in theory, that would contain some, a facilities plan as well, which, which should account for, for a tennis court, right? Because you said, we're what, maybe two to three months before we would have a construction problem, possibly? So that sort of fits into the timeline that Dr. Zoller was alluding to about maybe seeing a draft of, of where we might think the facilities are headed.
Well, and Dr. Zoller at Strategic Planning, I think you said there's, there is a, a, a plan, a building plan or a maintenance plan? Do we, do we have, I, I'm not aware of it, but.
There's a, I think there's an existing master plan for the district that Garvin Miller's.
Yes.
Has worked on. I think it needs updated. We had representatives from Garvin Miller at Strategic Planning this past week. We, we are, there's going to be a facilities, kind of a subcommittee, which essentially needs to develop an, an updated master plan, which would include athletic facilities and things like that.
So are we able to see the, the plan that needs updated? And then are we able to get the, at least that subgroup moving?
Yeah.
It sounds like with some, some haste. I'm, I'm certain there's other projects you're also waiting on, but we're probably going to run into those same timelines with a lot of things being done in the summer. So can we see the, the plan that, that needs updated that we're operating from? And then also expedite that group?
Yeah, I mean, we all know the government Miller plan was to build, add on to this building for a high school and build one new elementary. So, I mean, you do basically start from scratch.
Okay, so that is the, it wasn't comprehensive, though. It didn't have when each athletic space needed to be redone?
No.
Or when different projects needed to be, so not like a comprehensive 10-year plan of maintenance and updating?
None of that portion of the facilities. There was no athletic portion involved in that.
Okay, so we need that.
I think you have to look at it, we, long-term, we have the basketball floor. We have a stadium that has some issues with some of the bleachers, the locker rooms. And, you know, it's just, the, and the auditorium that's been waiting forever.
Correct.
I mean, so I think that's what we want to see from our administrators. And that's what he's working on, the long-term plan for that, you know? We are getting some seed money for the auditorium, but I think the public, if they can see that we're spending responsibly and have a long-term plan or see what the actual need, this isn't, you know, we're splurging or anything like that. This is just, they don't know or understand what our students and our faculty have to go through with the facilities we have.
Mr. Wang, it sounds like we're going to have a facilities group that might need help.
I would be glad to do that.
I don't want to volunteer you for it, but.
That, I would be glad to do that. And, you know, as we start to decide what, where we're going or what direction we're going, I'm also more than willing to help out, looking for any grants or outside help we can to make the, make anything better. So feel free to contact me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Wang.
Any other individuals?
I would just like to state, in August of 2019, there was talk of keeping the high school where it is, moving the administration building out, building there, tennis courts there, all the athletic facilities, except for the fort would be between Union Street and Charlotte Street. And then from that time on, everything got changed to put an addition on here for the high school and a new elementary school out behind Camden Falls. But we keep kicking the can down the street. We've got to come up with a plan and move forward with it because, as you mentioned, the basketball fort can be sanded one more time. That's it. The tennis courts are in disrepair. I think Phase 3 of the stadium was completed because I was in the men's restroom during football season, and there are new urinals, which I think sat in the, those are not new ones?
Those are not new.
So are they still sitting in the maintenance building?
Correct. But I'm not even sure we could use them in modern days.
Yeah, those, those were from American Standard, and they were part of Phase 3 of the stadium project that never got completed. So we have a lot of work to do. I, I'm anxious for the strategic plan to get in place because we are drastic behind where we need to be. And it's our kids that are going to suffer. So, okay, I'm off my soapbox.
So it sounds like we have a, a big, and we've known that. Like, we, we knew this coming in, and we wanted to let Dr. Zoller get in and get his feet under him. And now we've got, we've got some pretty big work to do and some decisions to make and some plans to put in place with some, with some haste and with community input. Correct. That takes us on to board discussion. So I believe Randy is still here. Yes, sir. Yeah, so this, I do want to, I want to engage in the conversation around transportation knowing that everybody has really different points of views they're going to bring to this, and they're going to have different questions. I think it is appropriate and fair to Randy that we give him time. If he, if we have questions, that we let him go back and, and research those. So bringing really good questions, but also giving him time to explore those. So last year, we had the survey done by the state. And that was really looking at, and if I say anything wrong, please correct me, really looking at how to make do with what we have because we don't necessarily have a bus, so physical bus issue. We don't necessarily have some of those different concerns, and it's not necessarily about funding. We don't have enough drivers, which is not unique to Tiffin. There's a national bus driver shortage. But we don't have enough bus drivers to continue doing things how we are. And we are getting to a place where we're not going to be able to keep doing this. So we kind of kicked the can, again, Larry, as, as you said, in that we didn't make that decision last year. We upped bus driver pay, and we did a huge call for bus drivers, trying to increase the number that are in our fleet, not to a ton of avail, correct? Again, not unique to Tiffin. It's nationwide, there's tons of news headlines about it. But now, the, the state came in, helped us basically look at, like, here are your options for making this the best you can with what you have, avoiding having kids on buses for, you know, hours and hours. And we already, we service more students than we are required to. So we're above and beyond the minimums. And so our options are to operate at the minimums, which would reduce services to students in the district and families in the district, or to implement staggered starts. So this is eventually going to come before the board as a recommendation from Transportation and from Dr. Zoller that, that we'll need to, to vote on. But looking to make sure that we're having these conversations and exploring these pieces, knowing that it's a Rubik's Cube. Anything that we move or it gets shifted, it's going to impact families.
See, I was at the Support Services meeting. Gosh, when was that? Was that earlier? That was Wednesday of last week? All right. And the, the staggered start time, you know, data was, was distributed, right? And there was some surrounding districts, thank you for providing that data. I mean, that's, that's really helpful, right? You know, obviously, a, a district like Mohawk, right? You're not going to ask them if staggered start times are working, right? It's, it's a building. So, you know, the, the data was provided, Finley, Fremont, Norwalk, and Fostoria, you know, all similar staggered start times to the proposal that, or some of the ideas. I don't know if it's official proposal yet, but, you know, as a, as a parent, my first reaction to it was, was not positive, right? It was, in fact, it was negative, right? I don't know how I would make it work, right? And I shared that at the Support Services meeting. And, and I think that's, you know, that's where we need to start to, to be the kind of that, that voice of the community, right? We, as the board, need to start to socially, socialize these ideas. We need to fix some of our communication problems. We need to not just put something up for a vote and get a negative reaction and decide to abandon the idea, but never solve the problem. Because, because here we are a year later. Now, I'll be perfectly honest, as a parent, I had no idea this was even being discussed a year ago, right? So that kind of comes back to our communication issue. But, but I think if we give the community time and we give them options, right? And not options of what you want the start times to be, but if the elementary starts later than the middle school and the high school, what do I do with my third grader for that gap, right? That doesn't mean we open a daycare, right? But it's that, that idea of why wouldn't I want this, right? That is a reason why I would not want to do this. And I'm, I'm speaking as a parent right now, right? So if I've got a, a board and a district and administration that are willing to help me solve the problem and not just tell me that I have a problem, I'm going to be willing to come to the table as part of that conversation, right? So, but even today, as we sit here, like, what is my third grader going to do in that gap? I, I don't know. And I think that's a lot of the objection that we're going to hear with that staggered start time. The, and the, you know, the release times, right? If you released the high school and the middle school earlier, right? You, you don't have nearly that problem. But, but I think that's, that, that is how we can help this as a board, right? We're not going to plan the routes, right? I mean, that's, number one, that's not our job. And, you know, we're not the Transportation Department. So I think that's where we need to step up as the board and not just propose things that we know people aren't going to like and be scared about it, right? It's, it's an opportunity to help us grow, right? And that's, you know, those are kind of my thoughts about it, right? And the proposal that we saw, right, I, I shared this at the meeting also. It was a, it was a little wishy-washy about what particular aspect of this we were most highly constrained by, right? It's, you know, after some, some dialogue there, it's clearly the, the number of drivers. If you've got, I don't know if this is the right number, I think I'm close. If you've got 15 drivers, you can only have 15 buses in motion, right? I mean, that's, that's a hard constraint. You can't break that. You can't raise more money to magically manifest drivers and buses, right? You've got a hard constraint there. So if you can only have X number of buses in motion at once, and that doesn't get everybody to the school, you know, that, that's where we've got to then help people understand that is the problem we have to solve for. We've got other constraints that, that are not optimal, right? The length of time a student spends on the bus, the, you know, the, the distance from the, the school, right? Sometimes that's not going to be out. We, I'm sure we'd love to bus everybody if we could, right? But it's not realistic. But the one constraint we can't break, if you've got 15 drivers, I know you can't have more than 15 buses moving at one time. So, so if the, you know, the, if the staggered start time is, is a proposal that's on the table, there's certainly gaps in it as it sits right now. And that's where, you know, I think we can help the, the Transportation Group to, to figure out how to make this work.
And the, I think the benefit that we have to help to explain is that by doing staggered start, while it does create other gaps, it does still allow us to serve that entire population. So we're not cutting, I'm not going to even estimate how many we would be cutting, but by cutting a, a lot of students out of being able to be bused at all. So it allows us to still serve the same number, but it does cause some other challenges.
Yeah, there is certainly a, a, a non-positive reaction to the statement, we're doing the minimum required, right? So that is, that is never usually a positive comment.
And we are doing above and beyond that by, by a lot. And I think that's important, especially with, with how we're laid out. And you hate to take away services. We, we had to at the beginning of this year, and it was, it was hard on, on families, and it was, it was hard on the, the Transportation Department. So if we move forward, we have to move forward with one of the two. And if staggered start is what we move forward with, that does allow us to continue serving at the same level we are, which is above and beyond the minimum.
I, I think one of the things you hit on is we don't want to talk about eliminating, but I think the public needs to know. We, the options we face, we already last, we enforced the two minimum, two mile minimum for kids past the middle school, I believe, or middle school and beyond. And we had some comments there, people that are still on waiting list, I think. But what I don't think people understand is during the school year, we also have children who either through IEPs or other needs might need that service, and we don't have it available, or we have to make it available. You know, we have kids who don't attend school but for if they had that ride. And so, but at the same time, we're not getting any more bus drivers, and we got the outlay of the demographics of our bus drivers. So going long-term into the future, it's going to be a problem. I mean, we're not going to be replacing these drivers based on the, the figures that we got. And so the options are, we could, I go to the, you know, minimum standards for the, the K5. And if people remember, we imposed that, not me, but the board did, when we started the different buildings. That was like on, really early on in that process. And it got the public used to the reconfiguration, but now they expect it. So that's one of the, you know, we have to ask the public, is that what, you know, is that what you want? And so, but we also, I guess, is what Dustin said, is we have to work with them, too. It's, we have parents that work, and so we have to meet them halfway somewhere, whether it's either hosting them in the morning or doing something or drop-off points because we just can't have them sitting out in the park for two hours. Or, what, what we discussed before with the bus errors. I mean, and the public needs to know, this has been something we've been looking at for years now. It's not, we're not doing it because we think we're getting any sort of major efficiency. It's because the reality is we have 15 drivers. That's it, so.
Well, and I think Mr. Williams' point was really solid. You know, last year, when the state came in and did the presentation, which was stellar and helpful, we did do a final forms email, we did a flyer and backpacks, we did an all-call, like, we did a text, all of the really fun things that we get all at once, right? Text, email, phone call. We did all of that, that the, the presentation was happening to discuss this. And still, we didn't have a, a huge attendance. And, and clearly, like, people who were around weren't, weren't getting that message. So we need to find another way to also share that and share those pieces. But I, I think that's a, that's a solid point. Like, we, we did hit all of those pieces, and we still missed a lot of opportunity there.
I told Randy I've lost a lot of sleep seeing the proposal. And I understand the problem, and bus drivers drive it all. But I also got a figure from the Child and Family Services through Rayanna Hayes. 67% of the households in Centec County are single-parent, and most of them are women. And that concerns me. I would guess most of them are working mothers. It concerns me that we're going to send the older kids to school two hours before the younger ones. And like Dustin said, who is going to watch them? I've wrestled with the idea. I know with my own kids, they got picked up at Trinity Church. And Dick Miller, a retired principal, was there in the morning to watch all the kids until they got picked up. That may be something we have to look at district-wide, but I don't know where or how or who would do that. But again, Randy, I understand the problem. If we have 15 drivers, we have 15 drivers. I, I don't know.
They have doubles and triples on their CDL, doesn't mean they can do doubles and triples.
You can't drive two buses at once, that was in? Gosh.
What about robots?
Well, and, and Larry, I think, you know, one of the, one of the things that, that I thought was good from the Support Services meeting, right, was the data from districts who've, who've had to solve this problem, right? And what their start times are, you know, the representation of that staggered start time. And, you know, we're, we're not an island, right? Sometimes it's a, it's a call to another district to say, you had a problem, you solved it, and you still have students, right? Not everybody left the district. Maybe not everybody loves the solution, but how did you solve the problem? What are you doing? You know, we, we don't have to be an island, right? It's, it's collaboration with other districts is, is how we're going to have to solve some of these problems, right? We're not going to have all the ideas. We're going to have to ask people who have apparently been relatively successful, at least, so.
So with that, I want to be mindful, similar to the, the, the facilities and the tennis courts, right? This takes time, and it's going to take you time to create new routes, new plans, get your, your bus drivers, I believe, to practice throughout the summer and do those things. When do you need to be able to start planning for this? When do you need a decision by?
I would need to know in April.
In April. Because I think gathering the data and looking to see what the solutions are, are vital. But I also think that we, we have to be able to make decisions and, and allow your department and all of those pieces that need to be done. And we've seen now where kicking the can gets us, right? Like, we've seen it with tennis courts. We've seen it with tennis courts, we've seen it with buses. Like, this problem is here, those problems are here, we've got to start making decisions. So you need a decision by April.
So I can start working on the routes in May.
It might be smart to put a task force together, go to these schools and talk to their transportation people. It might be smart to put a task force together, go to these schools and talk to their transportation people, talk to their principals. When I worked with Denise Callahan, she always talked about unintended consequences, one I'm thinking about here. What happens when we have a two-hour delay? What happens to lunch at the middles, at the elementary schools?
We already had the two-hour delay question with remote learning coming into play, so.
Okay.
So Dr. Saller, did you ever thought?
Just that Mr. Daniel and, uh, Mr. Uh, you know, Randy and I, we will put together a task force if that's, you know, called for. I think some of the issues, um, you know, have been thought through before. I, I think we can get something to the board, uh, in March, kind of to review, get some feedback. But I think, you know, our goal then would be to be shooting for an April kind of a decision or a recommendation, but gives us a couple of weeks and I think we can have something, uh, for the board to, um, at least have a, a sense of what we're talking about at the end of the day. You know, it, it may just be a cost of business factor where we're gonna have to provide some additional services. We can't just manufacture bus drivers, uh, which would be an additional cost. But we may be, uh, you know, we may be able to, uh, you know, to provide, you know, preschool or before-school supervision, after, you know, supervision, those types of things. So we'll get, we'll get to work on putting a, kind of a plan together.
I had a question and I lost it.
I'll talk while you think.
Thank you.
But then that becomes our job, our job as the board then to help communicate that to the community, right? It's making sure that we're understanding all the different situations, like mine in particular, right? Two working parents, kids, uh, one of them in the elementary range and then the others in the middle school and high school, right? That's one situation, right? That is by no means representative of Tiffin. And that's what, that's what we bring to the table as the board, right? That understanding of the demographic of the, of the town and the district and being able to make sure that whatever the dialogue and back and forth is, that, that we're covering the district, that we're not leaving 30% out to figure it out on their own.
And so that, thank you, you got me there. You're gonna be putting stuff together and you're gonna be exploring with your team or putting together a task force. And that brings, uh, that brings a drafter of possibilities in March with needing to vote for our transportation departments, we're not putting them further behind in April. That gives us, I mean, we're, tomorrow is March.
We have two months.
So how are we, what is the plan? Cause we don't have a, a communication person that falls on somebody. How do we make sure that we let the community know, like, hey, this is, this is coming? We're looking for solutions, we're, we're working on this. How do we, what's the plan then to, to be communicating so we're not missing families? And so they, it's also not a painfully brutal surprise come April.
I think you gotta go to the community and present them, you know, various forums, uh, you know, call meetings at the various, uh, elementary schools, middle school, notify them that this is coming and invite them to come out, you know, in multiple, multiple venues and get their feedback. I can, you know, the one thing I think I'm pretty sure of, it's, there is no perfect plan and we're not gonna be able to, to solve everybody's problem. But I think we've, we've gotta be able to get to, um, a more efficient way that accomplishes our goal of getting kids to school safely as well as being, you know, cost, as cost-effective as possible.
And so your, your group or task force will also work on hosting those events at the various elementary schools, especially is where I would think the most need would, would need to be discussed.
We have a leadership team meeting on Wednesday and, uh, this will be an agenda item we can talk about with our leadership team.
Yeah, and I think we, we as a, the board can't just push everything off onto the administration, right? I mean, if you, if you really read and understand what a school board is supposed to do, it is that partner with the community, right? That is a third of our job, I'll say, right? You know, and, and that's, you know, that, we had a comment earlier about our communication. We had a comment last month about communication. I've been highly critical of the school board in the past about communication. It, it's a third of our job and we can't defer it to the superintendent. If, I mean, if, if we need to go door-to-door to let people know, I hope we don't do that, right? I'm, I'm just trying to make the point, but it's our job. And we've gotta stop behaving like people are going to come to the board meetings to get the information. So, I don't know.
Got any ideas on it?
Well, we've got one more topic that we definitely have to get to, but I think we should talk about communication, uh, before we adjourn this evening.
Any other thoughts for Randy or team? Uh, House Bill 126? I think this is a revisit from last month, right, Dr. Gates?
Right, I think, um, I haven't talked with, um, I talked, I saw, um, Mr. Click a while back and, um, it was, um, clear that the House bill and Senate bill were, were, uh, different. But I'm not sure exactly how they differed in terms of, um, the restrictions of property appraisals and adjustments. But I think it had to do, try, trying to protect certain people. And, um, and I'm all for that. I don't, I don't think there's any, uh, reason we shouldn't be wary of that. But I also know that I think one of our primary jobs is to pay attention to where income sources come, come from and, and what they are. And, uh, as we all know, waiting for the state or feds, um, to give us money is, is a fool's errand. And, um, if they can give it and they can take it away. So, so the only consistent source of income that you know will be there every year is, uh, our levies. And, uh, the longer we wait to, um, allow nature to take its course and expand our, our base, um, the farther the hole we get. And, uh, we have very little housing development in, in the city. We have very little expansion. In fact, you saw from the, the data that, uh, Ms. Perry gave us, a, a contraction, actually. That doesn't bode well for Tiffin and that doesn't bode well for our levy, our funds. So I don't think we can afford to give anything up.
So to clarify, the bill is between committees, so, or between the, the House and the Senate. And from what I've read, the Senate bill is actually not, I believe, as tough as the House bill, which is why the groups are opposing getting rid of the House language at this point. After that, the only resolution would be the governor's veto. But, so the highlights of the bill were, one, we would not have the right to file our own challenge to any property assessment. We would not, because it would only be the actual owner of the property, not people having a taxable interest the way it is now. Second, we wouldn't have the right to appeal a decision by the Board of Revision, they would. And if we filed a complaint, we would have to approve each challenge or complaint in a separate resolution at a board meeting, giving them the notice of the owner so that they could object to it at our board meetings. And then we would have to file a complaint with actual proof of the challenge valuation, which would mean we'd have to expend money either in, um, appraisals or expert evaluations to challenge commercial or that kind of property. Cause that's where the real issue would be. It wouldn't be with residential homes, it would be with big commercial developments. And, um, so that's the changes for us. A few years ago, we actually did vote on certain challenges as a board. I don't have an issue with notice or resolutions. I think it's the idea that, I guess, we wouldn't be able to initiate our own challenges. And as Dr. Gates pointed out, what that does is it, it cuts off our access to either commercial property and levies are levies, so that money's gonna come from somewhere. So it'll be made up by the other property taxpayers, which is me, you, Dr. Gates there, because we won't be able to tap into that asset there, whether it goes up in value or not. And so, and so I guess if you're asking Dr. Gates to pass a resolution opposing that, I think historically, our representative did vote for the House version. I didn't see a vote in the Senate version. So I don't know what the resources would be beyond that, other than passing a resolution saying that you're opposed to House Bill 126 as it's been passed by both and then sending that to our representatives or?
Yeah, I, I searched for a, uh, resolution template. There really isn't one that, that exists. They're encouraging, encouraging advocacy on the part of Boards of Education and, and public school districts. So I think, I think just having this conversation and, and discussion tonight puts it on the record to our community in terms of how, uh, the board feels. I would concur. You know, I, I believe that the district, it's incumbent upon us to, um, you know, to engender the trust of, of all of our taxpayers, that we need to be diligent about collecting all of the revenue that is, um, available to the district. You know, we work with, uh, legal counsel and they provide, uh, recommendations to the district in terms of where, you know, these valuations and the like, um, tax complaint filings, et cetera, have changed. And, you know, I've indicated to, uh, to Mrs. Perry and to Ms., uh, Dr. McBride that I believe that we should follow the recommendations of, of counsel where it makes sense, you know, where the dollars make sense, because there is, um, a legal cost involved in, in, uh, challenging, you know, those businesses that wanna reduce their taxes. But we should essentially, um, you know, defend ourselves against that potential loss of revenue. So I don't know if, uh, Mrs. Perry wants to, you know, has anything further to add to that?
I could just cite what's happened over the last three years, um, when we started to actually, um, follow legal recommendations to pursue, um, increases on commercial, um, properties that our legal counsel felt was undervalued based on recent sales of those properties. So in 2019, 20 and 21, we participated in 22 different cases at the Board of Revision hearings that were held. Um, of those 22, we initiated 15 of them as increases. And there were seven that the property owners had requested decreases and they were commercial properties, so, um, we filed counter complaints to those. Of those 22 cases, we ended up receiving a benefit, um, through the hearing process in 14 of them. So the monetary value of those increases based on our, um, commercial tax rate was almost $220,000 for those 14 in which I'll say we succeeded in getting an increase or avoiding, um, the decrease that was requested. That was over a three-year period. The legal fees is, was probably about 10% of that, so we still would've netted about $200,000.
All right, and then Dr. Gates, I think another thing that changes is when you go into these actions with the legislation, you can't settle with payments basically in lieu of the taxes. So you can't come to a settlement where, hey, we'll drop the challenge, but we'll give you payment. And I think some of the districts have taken advantage of, not us, but other bigger districts where they're getting them, to actually give them sizable payments versus the, the assessment. And so the public understands it wouldn't just affect the school district, it also affects other local taxing bodies, the county, anybody else that levies taxes as well, so.
Yeah, I think, uh, the other thing to keep in mind, and maybe this is why they're doing it now, is that, uh, at seven and a half in, uh, percent inflation, uh, property values are gonna go skyrocketing and they already have in some, in some areas, especially bigger cities. So I'm sure they're protecting themselves because of that reason. And, uh, isn't it like six years, uh, Sharon? Six years between evaluations?
Yeah, there's, there's a, a full appraisal every six years. There are, um, updates every three.
Right.
Between there. But now this year, the legal counsel identified two commercial sales that they feel the auditor has undervalued. Um, and one of them is, they feel that it's undervalued about $1.5 million. That's market value. And the other one is almost a million. So, um, if we pursue those and would succeed, that would be additional revenue of about, almost $40,000 based on our tax rate.
Well, I think it is a, um, it is a, um, if you would talk about equity in both senses, it is about making sure that people are paying their, their just fair, uh, fares so it's that we don't put the burden on other people. And it's gonna be a burden, no matter which way you go. We, we have to have money. So, so it's gonna be a burden on someone. And I, and I think, um, that the, um, the industry and the areas, uh, and I think we need to go looking at, um, make, sitting down and talking with our local universities. I was speaking to a gentleman who owned some properties in town and he'd said he'd like to have that kind of opportunity to rent to people and not have to pay taxes. So I believe there's something, maybe that's, uh, to use Victor's term, payment in lieu of taxes, might be, uh, something we can negotiate with, uh, the universities. They provide a lot of services for us that we have to pay for and I think that might be something we could negotiate with them. I know in bigger, in universities, uh, in, in bigger universities in smaller towns such as Oxford, Miami, that's, that's a very common method of, of, um, providing some type of equity.
Any other thoughts on this piece? An additional items, Mr. Williams, I feel like you had pieces on there.
I do, I, I've got just two. I'll keep them brief, I know we're, we're late here. The, the first one is, um, is related to, uh, a visit to, to TMS earlier this month. And it occurred to me, uh, as we were getting the agenda ready for, for this meeting, we don't have a spot in our agenda to discuss any sort of interactions with schools, right? We're, we're all assigned a building, um, or two, right? Um, and we, we don't actually have a designated spot in our agenda for that discussion other than in what feels like new business. So it doesn't feel appropriate to discuss it here, but it doesn't feel appropriate to not discuss it. So anyway, I, I did visit the, uh, the middle school earlier in February, uh, spent quite a bit of time out there with Mr. Murphy. I wanted to, uh, just to get him, to know him a little bit better, right? And to get to know the school. Like I've, I've visited a few of the classrooms just as a parent, but haven't really, and, and we're in here, obviously, but... So I wanted to get to know him a little bit better. I wanted to understand if, if the building works for him currently. You know, uh, facilities is always a discussion as we see this evening. And, um, you know, if there's anything that, that the board can do for him or anything he needs from the board, right? So two, uh, two big things were, were some takeaways there. Um, you know, first of all, he, he gave me a tour of the building. I got to meet some of the, the staff and, and teachers and that was, uh, that was pretty fun, right? I got to step into a few classrooms and participate a little bit. So I thought that was really, you know, worthwhile for me, just to kind of see how the school operates during the day. But, um, there's a, kind of a, a transformation of the space. I remember when I was in middle school, there was a, a home ec room and there was a shop room and, and other kinds of rooms. And we don't use those in the traditional way, right? There's still a room in this building that has spots where ovens would've been plugged in, right? Um, and it's a, it's an awkward-looking room if you walk in and don't know what it is, but they, they make use of that room, right? There's a, a few other rooms like that, um, you know, aren't being used for what they were built for when this building was constructed, but he's making use of those. Um, and the, the library is another interesting one. Um, just the, the transformation of, of libraries and books over time. So, you know, they're, they're going through a process of figuring out how to make use of the library and still have a library, but also transform that space into more of a, you know, a media and a, a maker's room, right? Almost like a, you know, an innovation space, um, which, which, you know, I don't, I don't go to, uh, a library very often myself, but, I mean, I thought that was interesting, right? The, the library is transforming, uh, as a space. So, so those are things that are happening there. And the, the other all impression, other impression I walked away with was my understanding of our special needs students, eh, in the building. But it, it made me take a step back and, and see if I really understood special needs in the context of the district as a whole, right? I, I think we, we often say there is special needs and non-special needs, right? And we, we just kind of... we, we just kind of walk away and that's kind of our mentality. And there's a, there's a very broad spectrum of, of the special needs things that are happening in this, in this building. And I'm sure it's happening in all the buildings, right? Some of the, the other principals shared some things with me, but, you know, that's, that's something that's easy to, to not think about, for better or worse, right? But it's not just special needs, right? And so those are my two, my two big takeaways from that first visit, right? Just the, the use of the space and how that's evolving over time. And then our, our perception of, you know, I hope I'm not alone on this island, but, you know, we just sort of group these special needs individuals together and, and they aren't all special needs. It's, it's a spectrum. And there's a lot of interesting things happening there, so. But anyway, yeah, we, we just lack a spot in the agenda, so I, I thought I'd throw it in here.
Thank you.
Well, in terms of special needs, people never understand gifted's also special services that we have to provide. And, you know, we'd like to see those expanded. You were in middle school, Lynn, so I would ask you if you have any impression or maybe superintendent on the pit time? I know that I've had parents and students ask, hey, this used to be like intramural time where we ran off and burned some steam and now we have to sit here for the 15 minutes. And I actually got to witness one of these and, because we also have, I think PBIS, but then we also have pit time. And so I know that some of the kids were like, I'd rather run outside. And so is that like a doubling of services that we're giving them?
Yeah, I think the, the, I haven't asked too many follow-up questions, but my, my impression is that the, the pit time and the PBIS are definitely distinct, right? So pit, personal improvement time, right? So it's, it's about helping the student improve themselves. And I, you know, jokingly asked if I could send my 13-year-old double to that, but I think anybody else with a 13-year-old probably feels the same. So we didn't get into it too much, right? I was just getting introduced to those ideas.
Because I think staff, I wonder if they'd rather like be lesson planning or just getting a break. But it's, it's kind of neat seeing that, but special school.
That was it on that?
That was it on that?
Yep. And then the other was the communication thing?
Sure.
Yeah, so obviously we had, you know, someone, someone speak this evening about the, the special needs, you know, Mr. Stover. And we've had someone in the past meeting, Mr., get the name right here. Mr. Willman, thank you. It's come up in past meetings and it's going to keep coming up. I mean, we've had people come to board meetings and give us examples of things that we can do. And here we are, having the same conversation again. It was easy when I was sitting out there, because I could come and be critical, but now, now we've got to sit here and say, what are we actually going to do about it? Because we haven't really done anything yet. So I think it is something we, we do need to solve. And I, it's going to get harder and harder each month to walk away from these meetings without having done something. The, the criticism is not going away, right? It's not going to go away. And so, until we do something different, the criticism isn't, number one, it's not going to go away and it's not going to change. So, I, I think we'd be remiss without, without making some decision about something we're going to do. Maybe not a master plan, but we've got to move in the right direction, right? We're, we're stagnant right now. We haven't, we haven't changed.
I know, but government is supposed to be slow and it's only January, February.
That's not, that's not good enough.
I mean, our founding fathers specifically wanted our legislature to be slow. They don't need to be making laws and making life miserable for people through overregulation and stuff. So, I mean, we're supposed to be deliberate as well, so.
Yeah, but there's a difference between deliberate and just not getting there. And we haven't done it. And I think we've, I think we've also, like, I think we could anecdotally say that even though we get phone calls and emails and text messages about things, we're still getting the same complaints, right? So clearly that's not, that, that's not the thing. And so I know that strategic plan, a number of times, actually, I don't think we get out of a meeting without hearing a communications PR person, who that's their role. Like, we don't get, I don't think we've, have we had a single meeting where that hasn't been brought up 77 times.
That's why I said at some point, we need to go to a PR person.
And, and we do. Like, you don't see a ton of districts our size that don't have someone who that is their, their role. And so we, we also run into a place of, there's a need and we also have a lot of administrators and folks and educators who are already stretched thin. And you add a bus driver shortage and a sub shortage and all the pieces and we start to go, who do we expect to, to do differently or do more? So I think we...
I would challenge that a little bit.
Challenge it. I like it.
Why would we expect someone who's not us to be our communicators?
So what are, what are you, okay, then I guess I should rewind. When you say communication, are you saying the district's communication?
No.
So you're saying the board's communication?
I'm saying, that, I'm not saying the district doesn't have communication problems. I'm explicitly stating the board has communication problems.
Tell me more. And I, I'm, oh, so I really want to have this conversation, but I also want to be really mindful that we still have an executive session.
Exactly, right? So, the bus times is a great example, right? You know, even just us, you know, like, like we, we publish stuff to the, the school website, right? There was data in the, the survey that Dr. Zoller shared about where people get their information, right? We've got free media outlets that we don't publish, that we don't send data to. We don't send them information, right? They would be happy to accept information from us, but we don't do it. Now, each one of us can't go rogue and just start communicating to media outlets, right? We can't do that. We can't. We shouldn't, right? But...
The, the, the board has one voice.
Correct.
That's critical. One voice.
Correct. Right? And we publish the minutes on the website, but, you know, and, you know, we advertise on the, the school Facebook page, right? That you can view this meeting, but we're not, we're certainly not overly communicative, right? And, you know, in a, in an environment where we are under heavy scrutiny for not communicating enough, right? The, the knee-jerk reaction is to communicate way too much, obviously, right? So, you know, I'm sure it's going to be a pendulum, but we haven't released it yet. We're still, we haven't changed anything we're doing about communication. All right, I'm, you know, I don't know if we need to tonight commit that at the next board meeting, we will make a decision about a way we will improve our communication. I don't know what the right idea here is, but we've got to do something.
Well, if you look at our policy, our spokesperson is a superintendent. So, that's, he speaks for the district.
So our role is to...
The board is not the district.
No, our role is to be liaisons, but we are not supposed to be the mouthpiece. The mouthpiece is supposed to be Dr. Zoller. Is, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah.
And, and I wouldn't debate that, right? But we as the board, as a liaison in the community, have to find ways to communicate with our community. And our communication can't come through the superintendent. We have to be a liaison, which means we don't appoint someone else to be our communicator.
But he is to be the mouthpiece for the district.
So I think this is a good conversation to have with Westfield Consulting. And, you know, we could get into some strategies and some conversation around this. I would say that from a district perspective, we do have a current central office administrative position that has not been filled this year. We're looking to restructure that position to, to either include communications as a major role or, or just transition that into a communications piece. You know, we were, we've been saddled with other things that have come up this year that have slowed us down in that respect, other resignations, other, other types of things. So, I mean, that's certainly an area, I think, this spring that Mr. Bowes and I will be focusing on.
And I, and I think having, making sure that it's not a rushed but a robust discussion would be a great place to do it with the, the group that we're going to work with. And making sure that we're all clear on what you need from us, but what, what our role expectations are there as well.
Correct.
Does that work? We can continue the discussion? Okay. I just really want to be mindful that we have a number of individuals and we're at 9:30. Okay. Any other pieces or can I move us into executive session? All right. Our next piece is to enter into executive session to prepare for, conduct or review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees with no action to be taken afterwards.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Perry?
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabath?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Dr. Zoller, where would you like us?
Media Senator?